Welcome. We'll call this meeting to order for April 9, 2019, the regular meeting, the Manatee County School Board. I'm getting signals from the back that, uh... I'm sorry? Thank you for... Can you hear me now? Okay. Need staff assistance here. This mic's off. I can shout, I will shout a little bit louder. But I'm not sure if it's being picked up on TV.
They are aware and they're working on it.
Okay. Can you hear that? Okay. Welcome to the April 9, uh, 2019, uh, Manatee County School Board regular meeting. I'm calling this to order. The, we have a colored guard today, and I'll try to remember to speak up until, uh, throughout the meeting. The colors will be presented this evening by the Palmetto High School JROTC, escorted by Lieutenant Colonel Retired Philip Pugh, Army Instructor, Members Cadet Brandon Canalis, Cadet Christopher Camacho, Cadet Darius Norwood, and Cadet Corey Tinitus. Gentlemen, will you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Will you all now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you may be seated, let's give some applause for the JROTC. We have a student celebration. Uh, Mike Barber will now introduce each of these items.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders. Uh, you know, it's hard to believe as we stand here today that the first graduation of this school year is gonna be on May 15th. Amazing how this school year has gone, isn't it? Uh, but we have a very special night tonight, and I wanna just tell you upfront that, uh, the recognitions, the student celebrations that we're gonna have tonight, each one of these individuals has earned statewide honors, so it's a special night. Uh, our first group of students went through a very competitive process to attain all-state status in the arts. To tell us more, we have our District Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Specialist, Julie A. Bear. So, Julie?
Good evening Chairman Minor and Superintendent Saunders and members of the board. This evening, it is my privilege to introduce you to some of our most outstanding young musicians who were selected for All-State Music Ensemble Participation in 2019. The Florida All-State Music Ensembles are auditioned ensembles hosted by the Florida Music Education Association. Each year musicians in grades four through 12 are invited to audition four spots to perform in the All-State Ensembles. Students began working in May to prepare with their teachers for a grueling audition conducted in September. Our students' auditions are recorded and adjudicated by a virtual panel of judges. The high school chorus audition also includes a written music theory exam. In 2018, approximately 1,000 students from Florida's 67 school districts were selected for participation in the 21 various All-State Ensembles. Forty-two of those students were from the School District of Manatee County. These students rehearsed with their ensembles in Tampa last January. Each ensemble was conducted by a nationally acclaimed expert in music education. Final concerts were presented at the Tampa Convention Center for an audience of close to 3,000 attendees. This evening, I'm proud to present our All-State musicians who performed in the various elementary choral ensembles and the digital music showcase. So, coming forward to receive certificates at this time, and assisted by Mrs. Marsha Perry Judea, music teacher at Jean Wit Elementary. Our first recipient and participant was Skylah Berman from Jean Wit Elementary School. Vanessa... Vanessa Bonner from Gullett Elementary. Peyton Casto from Gullett Elementary. Jasmine Cornwell from Jean Wit Elementary. Brooke Dillon from Jean Wit Elementary. Mason Inglesburg from Gullett Elementary. Lucy Gurkey from Jean Wit Elementary. Edgley Johnson from Manatee High School. Hurin Kalia from Jean Wit Elementary. Matthew Martin from Braden River High School. Malina Rodriguez from Gullett Elementary. Sebastian Shamrock from Gullett Elementary. Foster Smith from Jean Wit Elementary. And Isabella Vargas from Braden River Elementary. On behalf of the district, I wish to thank the students for their hard work. We are so proud of their remarkable achievements. I also wish to thank the parents for supporting them and chaperoning and traveling to and from Tampa for this event. And mostly, I wish to thank their teachers who work tirelessly to provide a high-quality music education during school hours and volunteer outside of work hours to prepare the students for the auditions and rehearse with them once they're selected. I know Mr. Barber would like to do a photo, and if there are other music teachers present, we would invite them to join us. Thank you, students.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Also, uh, parents of students, uh, if I could better up here, if you'd stand up, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
Coach, maybe you could do a song while we wait? Mics are okay. Board members? Uh, we're off to a good start, uh, those were some All-State musicians. Uh, this next celebration, eh, you couldn't imagine having a better season than this young man had. My understanding he is a sophomore, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that makes Coach Guglielmi very, very happy. Uh, but, uh, Manatee High sophomore Noah Waddell won the Class 3A State Wrestling Championship at 113 pounds by defeating Miami Southridge wrestler Christopher Bucitol uh, in the state title match eight to one. By doing so, Noah made Manatee High wrestling history by becoming the first state champion wrestler at Manatee High to finish the season undefeated. Noah completed the 2018-2019 wrestling season with a 57-0 record. Here to tell us more and introduce Noah is Manatee High Wrestling Coach Andrew Guglielmi.
Hello. Chairman Minor, Superintendent Saunders, and the board. We are very pleased to be here. I'd like to introduce to you sophomore Noah Waddell. It's okay, it's okay. Noah... Noah's made the state tournament as a freshman last year and was one match away from placing at the state tournament. That did not sit well with this young man. He went to work in the classroom, he's got a 3.5 GPA, but he went to work in the weight room and in the wrestling room and really turned up his effort. And he was rewarded this year with a 57 and zero season. He was a district champ, a region champ, and a state champion. He, he did a lot of great things along the way. He had 30 pins out of his 57 wins, and he had 79 takedowns during the season. All were second best on the team, but nobody matched his undefeated 57 and zero record. We're very pleased, and as he said, as, as Mr. Barber said, we, we get him back for two more years. So, we, uh, not to put any pressure on you, Noah, but, uh, we're gonna be back up here, I think, a couple times with a few more as well next year. Um, Manatee High is, is very pleased and, uh, very proud of state champion Noah Waddell.
Would you mind if we invite his parents up to, uh, be in the photo?
His parents, Randy and Mackenzie, are, are two of the most supportive parents that you'll ever find. Um, and we are very blessed to have their support involved with the Manatee High wrestling team. Thank you very much.
Nice job. Yeah, um, we're starting to get tired of him. He shows up here every year about this time. It just keeps getting better, if it's hard to believe, uh, getting better than a 57-0 record. But this next student, uh, is also a sophomore, right? I don't know what's going on with our sophomore class, but, uh, sophomore Omaria... Omaria Gordon of Braden River High School was named the Gatorade Girls Basketball Player of the Year in the state of Florida. She helped lead the Pirates to 24 wins this season by averaging a park, approximately 30 points, seven assists, seven rebounds, and five steals a game. She's very busy. In addition, she was also recently named an Honorable Mention Selection to the USA Today All-USA Girls Basketball Team, and again, she's a sophomore. Here to introduce Omaria is Braden River Girls Basketball Coach Stephanie Smith.
Um, how you guys doing? Uh, Chair Ben Minor and Superintendent Cynthia Saunders and the board. Um, this is my first year here at Braden River. Um, thankful, thanked you to the administration at Braden River, brought me down from Chicago. This kid was the reason why I came here, um, to come down and coach this type of talent. She is not only a beast on the court with, with the stats have said, also 3.8 GPA as well in all honors classes, AP classes as well. Um, number 11th in the nation as a guard for her class as ESPN Top 25 is being recruited by top, every school in the nation, but Top 25 is what we're looking for right now. This kid is Gatorade Player of the Year, like you said, um, a pleasure to coach on and off the court. Um, and to be honest, she came to Braden River for one reason, I'll let you tell her why, tell them why, okay? Omaria Gordon.
First off, I just wanna thank you guys and, uh, Braden River for just giving me a chance to, uh, get the best education possible and be able to create a culture and a tradition at the school. Uh, I came to Braden River, you know, to create a culture, like something new, because, uh, they weren't well-known for girls basketball, so I just wanted to, uh, bring something new, bring a new tradition, and, uh, keep it there, and, yeah, pretty much. Uh, I wanna thank my mom and dad and, uh, close family members, um, for just, uh, bringing me here today and, uh, making me the humble young woman I am today. Uh, I also wanna thank my coach, Coach Smith, 'cause, man, uh, she taught me a lot this year, you know? Um, she, she's like, it's like I've known her my whole life and I've only known her for a year, but she's like, uh, like, she's like, uh, another mom to me, you know, so, um, she helps me with schoolwork, like, more, it's more than basketball, so she, uh, made sure that me and my teammates were able to, uh, build a family, and that's the most important thing about it, so.
I think we also have some family members, right? Would you all like to come up here and be in the picture?
Come on down, fam.
Come on down, come on down.
Um, I have a lot of family, I have five siblings, so.
All right.
I just wanna interject, uh, I get teary on these things. Makes us so proud of Manatee County, you know, public schools. And, and I felt that way in, last week I was, spent most of the week up in Tallahassee. And, um, I don't know how many of you know, any, there's, there's no other county uh, in the state of Florida that has the prominence up there that we do. Not only the President of the Senate graduated from Manatee, you know, schools, but also the Secretary of Agriculture, Manatee Schools. You know, we're, 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 we're really doing our job here in Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair. April is School Library Month as designated by the American Association of School Librarians and by Florida Governor Ron DeSantis. Each year, citizens across the country take time to recognize the programs, services, and resources provided by school libraries. This celebratory month provides opportunities across the state to highlight school library contributions to public education. So, here to accept a nice proclamation, we have Kimberly Organic, the Executive Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning. And to read the proclamation, I believe we have our Vice Chair, Gina Messer.
My turn. Whereas, April 19, uh, April 2019 has been designated the 34th Annual National School Library Month, and whereas, school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas, school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture. And whereas, school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and whereas, school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas, school libraries are a fun place. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of April 2019 shall be known, designated, and set aside as School Library Month. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this ninth day of April 2019, School Board of Manatee County, signed, Chair Dave Watchdog Minor and Cynthia Saunders, Superintendent.
Happy Library Month?
Would you mind coming down here and standing with her as we get a photo?
Sure.
No, it's okay, I was, I was just saying, I, I will add that, uh, libraries are one of my daughter's favorite places, so, all about it.
All right, now for, uh, something a little out of the ordinary, uh, and as always with this guy, uh, it is always something a little out of the ordinary, but to introduce it is Doug Wagner, our Deputy Superintendent for Business Services and Operations.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Member, and Superintendent Saunders. So, uh, I was the administrator at Manatee Technical College when this first originated, and I have promised that I would see it through to the very end. So, that's why I'm out here, up here tonight, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to say a few words. So, this is the first time in the history of the School District of Manatee County, that the School Board has present, been presented a patent, a United States patent, for an air-condition educational demonstration system and method of operation. So, the patent is a result of an invent, an invention by Dr. Michael, an instructor at Manatee Technical College who teaches theory, the theory side of air conditioning technology. Dr. Michael is not new to the world of inventions and patents. Before coming to Manatee Technical College, he worked at Eaton Corporation, where he created an invention and assigned a patent to Eaton as well. He also was awarded six patents in Russia, where he lived before coming to the United States 26 years ago. MTC is fortunate, fortunate to have Dr. Michael because of his vast knowledge and desire to share his knowledge with his students and the community and the industry. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Michael. Dr. Michael, if you'd please come forward. Give him a round of applause as he's coming down.
Good evening, School Board Members. I am very happy tonight to introduce your MyInvention as a simulator for safely and quick training air conditioning students so far at MTC. Uh, my simulator is designed to use not harmful type of gas as nitrogen instead of existing type of the trainer, training equipment that using the freon as very dangerous and per today requirements of the EPA, just occasionally release the freon into atmosphere could cost fine up to $44,000 per day. Those simulator existing now accomplish not too many tasks and cost so much from $25,000 to $35,000. My simulator, as you can see now on left, is cost only $200. That's a huge saving for our school and for future if you'll distribute all over the United States. I hope it will. So, uh, in this case, I would introduce my student that was successfully learned in class with another student, how to use the simulator. By the way, I would say that simulator can accomplish about 200 different tasks compared to existing even so expensive, only 10, maybe 12 tasks. Please, now, Mr. Wagner, well, as I'm, Mr., well, Doug, I'm sorry, Mr. Doug will introduce the simulator now. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board Members. How are you? I'm a student in the air conditioning class at MTC, and this simulator provides the beginning student the ability to learn how to hook up and manipulate tools of the trade. This can be done in just a few days, instead of a few weeks, on a more complicated system. So, I've, and some of my students have made a quick little video that just shows one aspect of what his simulator does.
There we go.
69, but we can...
We hooked up the low side of the manifold gauge to the low-pressure side, which is 69 PSIG, and that gives us the opportunity to check the low side of... P S I G, and that gives us the opportunity to check the low side of the system. Thank you, guys.
Okay, cool, okay, cool.
So, I would like to, I would like to thank all the School District Members, Dr. Green, Superintendent Saunders, because this has been actually a three-year process that we've been working on this, so this is something that hasn't happened overnight. All the School Board Members, Mr. Dye, who worked with this, Mr. Titlebaum, actually worked with this, there were a lot of paperwork involved with submitting the patent as well. I would like to have all of our team from MTC who's here tonight to help celebrate this come down in front also. So, we have Dr. Valerie Vines, she's our Director of Manatee Technical College. We have Mara Howell, our Grants and Marketing Specialist who is here. Linda Neal, who's our Junior Accountant, she couldn't make it tonight, but she was very instrumental in this. We have our MTC Board of Governor Vice Chair, Bill Lee, here. And we have our MTC Chair Emeritus, Dr. Dick Connerd, if they'd come forward as well. I would like to make a presentation to Dr. Michael. Yep, come on down. Mr. Lee, as well. Very good. So, this again is the first patent in the history of the School District of Manatee County. It's assigned to the School Board of Manatee County, because it has to be assigned to the School Board, so it actually resides with the School Board. And so, on behalf of the School District and the School Board of Manatee County, Dr. Michael, we'd like to present you with this plaque. It's actually a, a copy of the patent for you, and we appreciate all the hard work that you have done to get us to this point, so, very good. Thank you.
This ain't, this ain't too bad for the malfunctioning.
That's the truth.
Yeah.
They start going to their meetings, huh? At least we get results.
Yeah, I don't, has that guy ever been to a meeting? Makes you proud, doesn't it? These are wonderful things that are happening. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda, to include all the items listed under Agenda Amendments on the April nine, two thousand nineteen Agenda, updated April five, two thousand nineteen, and posted to the District Website at www-manateeschools.net. In addition, the Chair finds good cause to amend the agenda to move new business items, approval of February two thousand nineteen budget amendments, and approval of the year-to-date financial statements through February two thousand nineteen, to follow the approval of the agenda. Do I ever hear a motion to approve these amendments? Okay.
I, I'll make, I'll make the motion, I do have a question, though.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Ken, uh, Board Member Kennedy, uh, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question, yeah.
One question. Uh, I'm just curious, what's the, what's the need to move all those items before everything else?
Okay, uh, we have some people who are, have to leave for medical reasons about the financial statements.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, the agenda is amended accordingly. The, the next, in accordance with this amendment, we are going to ask for approval of the February two thousand nineteen budget amendments, and approval of the year-to-date financial statements through February two thousand nineteen, uh, following this, now that we've agen, uh, we've amended the agenda. Do, yes, sir, Madam Superintendent.
You want me to make one of the recommendations?
Yeah, would you, yeah. How about a recommendation about the financial statements through February twenty-nine?
Okay, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for February two thousand nineteen.
Okay, uh, there's been a motion for, or a recommendation by the Superintendent? Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Messenger, seconded by Board Member Kennedy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since this is coming before public comment, you might want to inquire if anybody has signed up to talk about budget issues?
Thank you, Attorney Dye. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment with respect to the, um, financial statements through February two thousand nineteen? Or, excuse me, uh, the budget amendments through February two thousand nineteen? The Chair, not seeing anyone who wishes to step forward on that, is, will call the question, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate nay, it passes five to zero. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation regarding approval of the year-to-date financial statements through February two thousand nineteen?
Yes, I recommend the approval of year-to-date financial statements through February two thousand nineteen.
Okay, there's been a recommendation by the Superintendent, is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
Still moved.
So, moved by the Vice Chair, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there any discussion by the Board Members? Okay. Is there any, uh, public comment, you know, wished to be provided at this time? The Chair seeing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate nay, it passes, uh, five to zero, unanimous, and we'll go on to other business here. The, uh, we have, uh, Board Member Golden, uh, would you please provide a, a report concerning the new, New School Board Member Academy Part Two?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had an opportunity to participate in the, um, New School Board Member Academy Part Two in Tallahassee on Tuesday afternoon, April second, and again on Wednesday morning, April the third. Basically, um, the idea of this part of the academy is that, um, we learn how to approach, issue, uh, resolution, uh, in a collegial manner, uh, that we try to disabuse ourselves of too much of the use of the word "I" and try to use "we." And, uh, the exercises that we went through, first on, um, the afternoon of Tuesday about staying in your runway, centered around the fact that there is a clear demarcation of role, uh, of roles between the Superintendent and the staff, and the Board, uh, of the, uh, of the School Board. The biggest problem, uh, that arises, uh, around the state with respect to Board and Superintendent relationships, and Board and Staff relationships, is that we do not follow protocol. We will not follow the, the chain of command in terms of, uh, of getting, uh, getting things, uh, things accomplished. One of the things that I thought was very interesting is that, uh, a part of staying in your run, uh, staying on your runway, was staying in communications with your Superintendent. And I wanted to come back and just thank the Superintendent for the, uh, Board Briefings that each of us gets to receive before, uh, we come into this setting, and, uh, before what she is proposing and or will recommend, uh, will come, uh, before the public. So, that was, that was one of the, one of the issues. The other thing, um, uh, on the Wednesday morning, uh, I don't have to report on what happened Tuesday night, do I?
Yeah.
No. We just, we just let that go. But on Wednesday morning, we had, uh, an exercise in what they call design thinking. And basically, um, it is a collaborative approach that we utilize in the workshops. It was just amazing to sit there today in our own workshop and hear the kind of discussions that were going on about issues that we knew were going to come before us later on in the, uh, in our, in our deliberations and in our work. The example that we used in design thinking, uh, was one that I think is very relevant and very, very important to our work that we're doing here in Manatee County, uh, and that is, how do we address bullying? What kind of, uh, things can we do that would make bullying, uh, uh, something that assumes a pri, primary role in our work? One of the ideas that came out of that, and I don't know whether we have it already or not, but I said I was going to bring it back. One of the ideas is that we have, in many of our departments and in many businesses, safety days. How many days we've gone without an accident? How many days have we gone without having this kind of a problem? And one of the suggestions that emerged out of our design thinking activity was to, to make that a school activity, that how many schools have we, how many days have we gone in this school without an incidence of bullying? How many, uh, how many days have we gone without someone being reported, uh, for bullying? And make it such that it really, you don't really want to be the person that's responsible for the school losing its opportunity to have a streak of days, uh, without bullying. So, uh, I, I thought it was very helpful, very interesting. We closed it out with advocacy training, uh, for, uh, School Board Members, how to effectively do that, and, uh, rather than belabor my learning about advocacy, I think we're going to have a report, uh, on the advocacy that, uh, that, that took place, uh, up there. The advocacy day for the Florida School Board Association was the very next day after this training, so, thank you very much for the opportunity to report, and I hope it's, I hope it's helpful. It is helpful, and. Can you hear me out there? Really, nice, well, is it on? Okay, um, thank you, Board Member Golden, you know, for finding the opportunity for going to Tallahassee, uh, and, you know, you know, fine tuning your skills as a, a Board Member. Next, uh, I'm going to ask that the, uh, Board, that, uh, Board Member Hopes, uh, make a report about the Florida School Board Association Day in the Legislature.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you know, you and I both attended the Florida School Board Association's, um, annual Day in the Legislature. Uh, we were, had the opportunity to both meet Commissioner Corcoran, um, and actually, we posed for a photograph, the two of us, with the Commissioner. We heard from him about how he, um, acquired his, his true passion for education. We had numerous briefings, it was a very informative period of time of, of, of learning firsthand the direction the Legislature was taking, where the status of certain bills were, but more importantly, we had the opportunity to meet with our colleagues around the state to better understand the positions that, that they were in, uh, our, our colleagues in the Panhandle dealing with all of the, the damage still from Hurricane Michael. Uh, and then we had the opportunity to actually meet with legislators, um, and, and discuss the positions of the School Boards from around the state, our financial challenges, as, as well as, um, you know, meeting many of the mandates that do not currently have adequate funding. And it's important, um, for our voices to be heard, because I can tell you from spending, you know, nearly thirty-five years up there, both, both lobbying and as an agency head, that there is nothing, uh, that is as impactful to legislators than local elected officials and stakeholders, taking the time to travel up there, meet with them in their offices, and, and have those conversations to, to better understand our position, uh, and to better understand, you know, the challenges that they have. So, uh, we've got some of our own issues that we have here with regards to our legislation for our associated nursing, uh, degree, uh, for MTC and others, uh, as well as, uh, you know, being the local, uh, School Board, uh, that is represented, uh, that represents the Senate President's, uh, hometown. So, it, it meant a lot to our local legislators and leadership for us to be up there, and I enjoyed the time together with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Hopes. Okay, I'm going to give a, try to make a kind of a brief report, um, of the Board of Directors Meeting of the Florida School Board Association, as I think most of you know, I am a Director of the Florida School Board, uh, Association, uh, which, uh, meets maybe three or four times a year, and we come up with, you know, positions and advocacy, and try to learn something about how to better promote public education, both in our own district and throughout the, the state of Florida. One, uh, as, uh, Board Member Hopes, uh, said very well, um, being in Tallahassee is hitting around, learning, you know, from other people, but also seeing people, uh, who, who are in political office, and being seen, and, uh, not just, uh, from, uh, with those who represent this area, but, you know, throughout the state. And I, I think that, uh, I, I learned a lot by, you know, talking with those who, who didn't agree with me on positions of the Florida School Board Association, but I think they learned a little bit about what the, this district and what the Florida School Board Association is trying to do in making education better, both here in Manatee County and throughout the state, through, you know, proper funding, and how, um, it's kind of devious in our position, uh, to, you know, require, uh, districts to do things but not provide the funding that is necessary to, um, carry it out. One of the things, one of the speakers that we had, uh, before the Board, uh, was an attorney from Tallahassee, uh, who was retained by the Florida School Board Association, uh, with respect to the statewide grand jury, which our governor, you know, petitioned our Florida Supreme Court to appoint, and, um, the order of the Florida Supreme Court to, um, impanel a statewide grand jury with, uh, the goal of looking into what there may have been, um, improper conduct or criminal conduct, uh, by any school districts, and I think it's ma, mainly focused on Broward, but, uh, the jurisdiction that the, um, Supreme Court gave was, it's, uh, all across the state, uh, to make sure that, uh, districts, you know, faithfully, uh, carried out the funding that was provided, uh, by the Florida Legislature. Our, uh, Board Attorney, uh, Mr. Dye, uh, was up there, and he's going to talk a little bit more about, uh, the petition and the order of the Supreme Court, uh, concerning statewide, uh, grand jury, but, um, I think that, uh, working for us, uh, through the Florida School Board Association, uh, is the, probably the premier person, uh, to, and knowledge, knowledgeable about, um, grand jury investigations and what they do. I will let on that, um, in a, a few earlier lives, uh, of my own, I, I was involved in a statewide grand jury, not as being investigated, but, uh, as a, as a prosecutor when I was, uh, the resident assistant state attorney for DeSoto County, this is back, you know, decades ago. But it, it is, um, kind of a unique, it's not used very often, uh, way of trying to, you know, curb improper and criminal, you know, conduct. I was kind of surprised about this, but, uh, that we would have one, uh, on this topic and statewide, but, um, we are facing that, and it's very important, I think, Mr. Dye will go into further detail. What, I want to thank you for letting me be there in representing you, um, in Tallahassee, most of last week, um, meeting with legislators, meeting with other Board Members throughout the state, and it is a thrill to be with advocates of public education, like everybody I think here is, in, in, in appreciating the importance for our communities, our state, and our country, of public education, making all of us better. So, that's my brief report, and thank you again for the, uh, privilege of representing you up there. What, uh, I'm going to give a, you know, brief report, because, uh, with respect to my travels to Orlando, um, uh, yesterday, representing you all through the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. A lot of it did talk about. A lot of it did talk about this statewide, you know, grand jury, about the importance of us all taking it seriously. The folks up there and in Orlando said, well, it's very important to have your attorney, you know, up to speed about what this grand jury can do and, and will do, and to be prepared to respond about any inquiries that we have. One of the, that's about it for right now, and thank you for allowing me to represent you in Orlando as well. Let's go on to the next, we're talking about public comments, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to our distinguished vice chair, Gina Messenger, and report on who has signed up for public comment.
We, we have quite a few friends signed up tonight.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to read our typical spiel. These are, this is our policy. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I have thirteen people signed up. I will begin with Ann Lee, and after Ann Lee will be Mr. Nelson.
Good evening.
I was, I was so, I was so proud to see all those children up here tonight. That's all, what we're all about, and that's a little bit about what I'm going to talk about tonight. My name is Ann Lee, and I'm a proud board member of the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County, and I'm honored to be standing here with Ms. Dawn Stanhope. She is the CEO and president of the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County. Thanks for being with me tonight. The Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County serves approximately a thousand children a day at five locations, three of which are located in elementary schools, and two are amazing club facilities that are dedicated to the Boys and Girls Club programs and activities. In an effort to make sure that children get to the clubs, we have provided transportation for three hundred and eighty-four students from twenty-two schools to the Palmetta and DeSoto Clubs every day. In recent years, transportation has become expensive and difficult to provide since our bus fleet is aging, currently costing us approximately $250,000 annually. We have a challenge. We're at a crossroads. We cannot continue to provide transportation on our own while increasing the capacity to serve more youth. As of 2019, 2020 school year, and in conjunction with opening the new DeSoto Club, doubling our capacity, we will not be able to continue to provide families with transportation to the clubs. Instead, we're asking the school district transportation department to add our clubs in Palmetta and Bradenton as pickup and drop hubs as an alternative so that parents can continue to work, knowing that their children are safe, supervised, and productive in an environment that helps them with academic success, character development, and healthy lifestyles. We have a solution. Boys and Girls Clubs understand there's great complexity within the transportation services at the district, and are not here to ask for a handout, but rather to find ways to reciprocate services that would complement the program's skills and support that you provide to our youth. After conducting some additional research, we have determined that we are in a unique position to offer daytime facilities to the school district for the possibility of hosting programs with space needs, including VPK classrooms and ATOS, an academic amnesty program that redirects student behaviors while serving out-of-school suspensions. Also, we have in our employment eight fully qualified and vetted bus drivers who could potentially assist the district with the current bus driver shortage. A couple of weeks ago, Dr. Robin Thompson, Director of Early Learning for the District, said something in our meeting that really struck home. She said, these are our children. No matter, no matter what agency you attend or what school, we're all responsible for them. I'm here to ask you for your back, backing on this request so we can ensure that all the children in our community have the best support and guidance possible to become amazing future leaders. We look forward to working with the superintendent and her staff to deepen our partnership and help those that need us most with the, to reach our full potential and productive, caring, responsible citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, and after Mr. Nelson will be Carol Hadad.
Mr. Chairman and School Superintendent, I'm trying to be as serious, I may ramble a little bit, but I'm going to talk about what you talked about this afternoon, and I was scheduled to talk anyway, regarding your finance committee and its function. And one of the things I ran about is I monitor you and look at your training, your self-assessment. And one of the things I think causing the problem is, to what extent does a government, governance participate in discussions which are effective and result in clear-cut decisions? I think they're not longer doing a clean cut. Now, I happened to read in the paper, article here this week, city leaders call school board non-functional. And if you look up "non-functional," it says, "Any project requirements need to be well-thought-out, balanced, and clearly understood. Perhaps the most important is that they are not dropped or compromised halfway through the project." I've sat through, what, as long as you've been here, Mr. Minor, seven years, I've been to every meeting, just about every meeting, once, once election, been to your workshops, been to your committee meetings, and there's always that, it's not a clear-cut decision. And some of the things I think about is some of the things that you brought up today. I do all, did attend all your training sessions. And one of the things, through loud and clear that he talked about, he went to, is you've had all this decision back of the eight years, or the seven years I've been. And one thing that bothers me the most is you have no power as individuals. It's reiterate in statutes, in the training. What does that really mean? To me, it means anybody goes off and has to consult the board. Nobody has power to do anything unless you act as a board. And Reverend Golden brought up, you're going to start looking at the finance committee. Should look at the beginning. And I looked at, I spent two weeks ago on Saturday, the full Saturday, looking at all your meetings on television. I read out the minutes, looked up the minutes, way back to November nineteen seventeen, or 2017. And I could not find that there were board actions asking for candidates for your finance board. And the requirements you wanted, that did not appear. So how did they get started? And so when you get, they're going to look up at this, third to seventh of May, you ought to do more. You shouldn't ignore that finance committee if you want it to function. They presented you with several resolutions, including one on the, what was it, eight, twelfth? I think a twelfth of February, for a resolution, and you haven't replied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, and after Carol, Minnie King.
Thank you for this opportunity to, to speak with you. I'm a retired educator. Oops. I began my career...
Excuse me, can you state your full name?
I'm a retired, I'm sorry.
Will you state your full name?
Oh, Carol, Dr. Carol Hadad.
Okay.
Is that too loud?
That's fine.
I'm a retired educator and a resident of Manatee County. I began my career teaching nursery school. I ended it teaching university students, and in some ways, the techniques were, you know, the content was different, but the techniques were somewhat similar. I'm here in part because of my affiliation with the Brady Campaign, and it's my understanding, I don't know if it's occurring tonight, but that the board is, is meant to be deciding on whether to arm teachers, arming of non-security personnel. As a teacher at various levels, a former teacher, I still do research and writing, but I'm not in the classroom these days, although, I don't know, I might try to get back. It's really, we all want to save children. We all want to protect them. We are all appalled at the heinous crimes that have been committed in our schools. But when the two major teacher unions in the country, the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers, say that arming teachers is not the answer, we have to listen. My fear is that the school board could in fact become liable if, if injuries occur as a result of arming teachers. Another concern I have is that the criteria for teacher selection could in fact result in a situation in which the ability to shoot and familiarity with firearms supersedes skill and knowledge of a subject matter, knowledge of the subject matter. So, I urge you to, to not allow this, arming of teachers. I know that Sarasota County, Sarasota School Board, rather, just rejected the idea. We have to listen to teachers. We have to listen to students. And there are, you know, it, it goes without saying, I looked at the Stoneman Report, four hundred and seventy-three pages, I didn't get through all of it, but one thing that stood out to me was that the majority of shootings, and they studied others, oops, I talk with my hands a little bit, they studied others throughout the country, occurred with semi-automatic pistols and semi-automatic rifles. So, those are weapons of war that should not be in schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Minnie King, and it says here, care of Manatee. Are you speaking for our group? Have you?
I am speaking for more than myself, so if I could have an extra...
Okay. And then after Minnie King will be Makiko Felice.
Good evening, Board, Ms. Saunders, Mr. Wagner. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of a group of people who have been friends and colleagues of Walter Miller over the last, and have worked very closely with him for over the last six years, although we have all known him much longer than that, but we have become very close with Walter over the last six years. And as many people may know, Walter did pass away two weeks ago. Walter was a member of the school board at one time, as well as an assistant superintendent. You know, in the last few years, we've lost a lot of our leaders, our strong, strong leaders that have brought a lot of history to Manatee County schools. Jean Witt, William Bishaw, Dr. William Bishaw, Dr. Dan Nolan, many others, but those are the ones that keep coming to my mind, and now Walter. The thing that is common between the three others that I mentioned is that they all have some sort of a building, actually, they have schools that are named for them. And that is something that we do to honor people who have given their lives, their careers, and their efforts and energies to the betterment of our school system and to our community. Now, there's no way we could actually name a Miller, Walter E. Miller School, since we already have a Miller Elementary. However, we do make a practice of naming buildings, certain facilities, after those folks, and that's what I'm here to request of you this evening. I filled out the paperwork, and one of the things that the paperwork says is that you need to give a good reason. And for the audience, I don't know if they can see this or not, this is the program from Walter's recent funeral, and actually was a celebration of a servant's heart, is what it, we called it. And this is the reason why I think that this district needs to have something that bears the name of Walter E. Miller. Walter Miller came to Manatee County in 1979 as an assistant superintendent. After ending his working career at the district, Walter was then elected to the Manatee County School Board in 1998, and served three terms, including school board chairman during those times, and retiring in 2010. Walter was very active in community affairs, serving on several boards, including Meals on Wheels, Foundations of Dreams, Take Stock in Children, Governor's Council on Sports and Physical Fitness, Florida Educational Planners Association, Manatee Federation of Homeowners Association, Manatee Exchange Club, the Family Partnership Board, Boys and Girls Club, Manatee Gator Boosters, I'm not sure I would have done that one. Anyway, St. Joseph Catholic Church Advisory Board, St. Joseph Catholic School Board, Knights of Columbus, St. Joseph Finance Committee, and St. Joseph Church Lecter, Central Florida Education Coalition, Florida School Board Association, and the Retired Educators Association. Walter was the driving force to bringing the Sunshine State Games to Manatee County in 1992. This community involvement led to him being selected to carry the Olympic torch in the 1996 Olympic Torch Run. Walter also wrote the grant that led to the funding and development of GT Bray Park and Blackstone Park. Walter participated in the design and construction of every Manatee County school and facility from 1979 to 2010. For many years, Walter was also a part of the radio broadcasting team following the Manatee Hurricanes throughout the state. We believe that this level of commitment, dedication, and contribution to the well-being of so many facets of our community, school, church, business, and recreation warrants the honor of having the athletic stadium at Parish Community High School bear the name of Walter E. Miller. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Makiko Felice, and after is Jack. No last name, just says Jack.
I'm Makiko Felice. I'm here today as a mom and a representative of the Florida Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America. We, along with most students, parents, teachers, and school administrators, oppose the proposal to allow teachers to serve as guardians. The majority of districts have declined to even arm non-instructional school staff, or sixty-seven school districts, twenty-five have utilized the guardian program. Manatee County is one of them. But very few of those opt to arm existing school staff, instead hire full-time security guards. This indicates the broad contest that educational school staff should not be transformed into armed guards. So if the majority of Florida school not believe staff should be armed, why are we considering going beyond that and arming teachers? There is no evidence the arming teachers would make our schools safer. In fact, the data indicates just the opposite. Research shows that students may be aware, aware and how teachers keep their firearms and how, how to obtain access. Research also casts significant doubt on the ability of teachers to stop active shooters. The fact is that shooting accuracy of even the most highly-trained law enforcement officers significantly decreases in stressful situations such as gunfights. What level of stress do you think a school teacher is under in an active shooter situation in a classroom full of children in fear for their lives? We also know that armed civilians complicate law enforcement response to active shooter incidents. As former Dallas Police Chief David Brown said, "In the wake of an ambush on law enforcement in 2016, we don't know who the good guy is versus the bad guy when everyone starts shooting." In addition to these facts, here are the several potential fatal mistakes made by armed guards in schools last year. A St. Paul, Minnesota, third grader managed to pull the trigger of a gun in an officer's holster, firing a bullet into school floor. A teacher in California demonstrating firearm safety mistakenly fired a round through the ceiling, injuring three students who were hit by... injuring three students who were hit by falling debris. And a deputy in Michigan school left a loaded service weapon in a middle school locker room where a sixth grader found it. Just last month, in Blountville, Alabama, a substitute teacher discharged his concealed carry weapon that was in his pocket in a first-grade classroom. Later, he was arrested and prosecuted. The list goes on and on. And when this is so common, why would we arm classroom teachers? Students don't want this, teachers don't want this, and parents don't want this. Please do the right thing for our children and teachers who will be most affected by your decision. I started my Manatee County group last year after Parkland shooting. My friend lost her brother in Parkland shooting. And please do the right thing. This is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack? And after Jack is Madison Markham.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, Vice Chairman, members of the board. I'm actually here to speak in support of allowing teachers to have the decision to be voluntarily armed. I think we get it mistaken when everyone sounds like they think educators would have to carry a firearm in the school. It's their choice. If they want to take the training and complete the requirements, then they can. And I'm a fact guy, like evidence. I like to critically think. So I'm here to bring you guys a little bit of facts. The United States Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Investigations conducted a study of active shooter incidents in the United States between two thousand and two thousand and thirteen. There was a hundred and sixty incidents. That spanned over anywhere than an active shooter situation occurred. Twenty-one of those incidents, the situations ended after an unarmed citizen safely and successfully restrained the shooter. Twenty-four percent of the active shooter situations were in an educational institution, either a high school, elementary school, middle school, or a higher college. So in high schools, there was fourteen, which resulted in twenty-one people killed, five being school employees. Out of those incidents, ten of the shooters were apprehended at the scene, seven after being initially restrained by school employees, including one incident where students assisted. The second most common incident locations, where some of the highest casualty numbers occurred, were at schools. That's where they look to go, because it's an easy target. They know that their force won't be met with force, because nobody has a gun. Guardians are great. Law enforcement officers are great. They have the uniform, their presence is great. But there's one of them, or there's two of them. But not knowing who has the gun would likely stop someone from coming in and trying to shoot up the school, because they don't know when they're going to be met with the same force. And we're not saying teachers have to go in the hallway and hunt them down. They're there to protect. But anyways, so the study identified twenty-one incidents of the hundred and sixty where unarmed citizens made a selfless and deeply personal choice to face the danger of an active shooter. In those incidents, the citizens safely and successfully disrupted the shooting. In eleven of those twenty-one incidents, unarmed principals, teachers, other school staff, and students confronted the shooter to end the threat. They were all successful. They ended the threat. No teachers, no employees, no students were harmed. I would implore you all to use common sense. Look at the actual facts and the evidence and the statistics. Arming the teachers or allowing them to have the choice to arm themselves, I think, is a good idea. That's not saying that the librarian is going to be packing a gun. But if the P.E. teacher, an administrator, wants to carry a gun, then so be it. They should be allowed to do that. In addition, what we learned from Parkland is the three administrators that rushed into that building and who were shot, if they would have had a gun, they could have saved their lives. Thank you.
Jack, hold on, before you go. For the record, can you tell us your last name?
O'Keefe, I apologize for that.
Can you spell it?
O apostrophe K, E-E-F-E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Madison? And after Madison will be Ahmad.
Good evening. My name is Madison Markham. I'm a dual-enrolled senior at SCF, and I've been a student in Manatee County since I moved to Florida three years ago. I'm also a member of Team Enough, which is the youth arm of the Brady Campaign. In my work, I have worked with people who have lost people in Sandy Hook and are survivors or have lost people in Parkland, which is part of the reason I'm up here, but also just as a student and a sibling. I'm here to ask you all to vote against arming teachers in Manatee County. When my friends and I first heard the discussions of arming teachers last year, the idea seemed almost ironic to us, to bring firearms into the very classrooms we feared they would be brought into. But unfortunately, that's where we are. While I and all students deeply appreciate the obvious dedication to our safety that our educators, faculty, administrators, and school board hold, we don't want it to get to the point where the safety measures put in place make us feel more unsafe. And I believe arming teachers crosses that line. We wouldn't have our school resource officers or cops teach us chemistry or English, and I personally don't see why the reverse scenario, arming teachers, is any better. We go through at times traumatizing drills. We read on the news stories of school shootings, large or small, and gun violence of other forms as well every day. Some of us know people who have died by or have survived gun violence. Many of us are more on edge, as every year more cases of school shootings or near-school shootings arise. Adding armed teachers, regardless of what testing and training they have, even if being armed is optional, will simply make us more nervous. I even know teachers and students alike who vow to leave school if educators are armed. We are the generation that fears school shootings, and I think everyone here ought to consider what message it sends to us students, some of us who are gun violence survivors or have lost someone to it, or the rest of us who simply fear it, that arming teachers is a possibility or a reality. It will inflame the fear that we die in a place that when we were little felt so safe and taught us so many things. A fear that remains in the back of our minds since our parents and educators had to explain to us what happened to kids our age in Sandy Hook so many years ago. Please leave it to the professionals and not our teachers. As students, teachers, parents, siblings, or gun violence survivors, I ask you to listen to us and in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ahmad? And after Ahmad is Fallon.
Good evening. My name is Ahmad of SACE, and I'm a senior at Braden River High School. And I'll be joining Cornell's class of two thousand and twenty-three next year to study global health and human development on a pre-med track. In my pursuit of this career, I have come to realize that one of the largest global pandemics is gun violence. I've come to realize that this decision to arm our teachers, even voluntarily, is a fan to the flame of divisiveness.
Good evening. My name is Alana Keltley, and I am also a senior at Braden River High School. This fall, I'm going to be attending the University of Pennsylvania to study philosophy, politics, and economics. And I came here this evening because I care. After thirteen years in the Manatee County public school system, I care about what happens after I leave. I care about, I'm sorry. I'm choosing to pursue a career in public service because I care that people are better off than when I met them and because I care that we make progress. This resolution to arm non-security personnel, however, is not progress. It is instead a hollow attempt. Between my first day of kindergarten and my senior year, my teachers have been some of the most impactful people in my life. Not only are they intelligent and caring, but they go beyond the call of duty time and time again. This does not mean, however, that we shouldn't trust them with a duty so great as our lives.
No regular teacher or staff member needs the responsibility of defending their students' lives and their own when their job is to instruct and to inspire. The ugly truth of America that I've grown up in is this. Every time I go to a movie, a community event, a mall, any public place really, I look around for exits, entrances, people. I'm scanning and checking and living in this constant fear, because you never really know what could happen. I wish I could say this is just my own paranoia, but it's not. This is our reality as students. So I'm asking you to put yourselves in our shoes. No matter what, this is an ever-present threat just looming in the lack of safety that we feel as teenagers and as Americans today. If there is one thing that I can assure you, adding twenty-five, fifty, or even a hundred guns to campus certainly will not make me feel safer. The professionals that you've placed on campus, like our SROs, do a great job. But knowing that there is a gun in every classroom, I walk in only as to the fear.
At the end of the day, there are only a few people who are directly affected if an incident like this were to occur. The students, us, and the staff. Yet, the decision is put in your hands. I'm asking you to think about how this actually affects us on a daily basis and also consider the many ways that our resources could be better utilized. And please vote against the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fallon? And after Fallon will be Liv. Fallon? All right, Liv, come on down. And then Mark Henry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Liv Coleman. I'm a resident of East Manatee, a taxpayer. And most importantly today, I'm an educator from a family of educators. I've taught ten years at the University of Tampa as a professor of political science and international studies. But of course, today, I'm only here representing myself. As a lifelong educator, I'm deeply troubled by the Florida State Legislature's proposal to allow teachers to carry guns in public school classrooms and what that would mean for Manatee County schools. Teachers should teach, and trained law enforcement should provide security when needed. The very idea of arming teachers sounds like a ploy to provide security in the cheapest way possible. But the very idea that a teacher even could carry a service weapon is a profound perversion of the teaching profession. Teachers are there to nurture children, develop their skills in critical thinking, and to help them grow. The idea that they could ever be in a position to shoot a student or anyone else is horrifying, is antithetical to the profession of education. Unfortunately, however, guns in schools are not hypothetical situations. They are realities that teachers already deal with. My mother taught in inner-city Minneapolis public schools and once confronted a parent who had a gun on campus. She was not armed, and I believe that contributed to her ability to de-escalate the situation without incident. I worry, however, about what extra guns on campus would mean when inevitable work tensions arise. You don't have to start with an active school shooter scenario to end up with violence at school. The presence of any extra guns increases the risk of violence and lethal threats of violence. There's a lot of potential for the "stand your ground" doctrine to go awry in Manatee County public schools. But let's bring this discussion back to education. When I was a student many years ago, I was required to sign a pledge of nonviolence. I pledged to bring no weapons of any kind to school. Our teachers frequently led discussions about nonviolence in school. We had peer mediator programs to teach us peaceful ways of resolving conflict. Students should have peace of mind when they come to school. That comes when they uphold such a pledge of nonviolence themselves, and that comes when they know that their teachers are committed to their safety but also dedicated solely to their learning and to nonviolence. Thank you very much.
Mark Henry? And after Mark Henry will be Al Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Henry Jean. I'm from Haiti. Seven years ago, I moved to the United States of America. And now, tomorrow, will be exactly seven years since I moved to the U.S. I can honestly say I'm living in the divided state of America. As a Haitian, I can sincerely say what division can do to a country. For myself, I have to live Haiti because of the current situation in Haiti. Maybe I can here, learn from my experience, to tell the American people the current situation that we live in right now is very unfortunate. We used to inspire, we used to give aspiration to other countries. Yes, it's possible to have a hopeful and a bright future. Unfortunately, when we are watching the news, when we are living in the United States, we're thinking, is it the United States that we're living today? I'm not for poor or against, but one thing I'm trying to make sure I promote, a very positive interaction community. As a Haitian, I'm very fortunate that when I moved to the United States, after spending two years without a green card, I became a permanent resident. And I went to school. I earned a bachelor's degree at the U.S. Sarasota. Today, I'm an author, I'm a social entrepreneur. Most importantly, I'm a public servant. The reason is because I'm very grateful to what I've received from the American people. I wish you guys truly understand what it means to be in America today. I wish you guys truly understand what it means to live in a country where people are united. Unfortunately, when I watch the news, I feel very concerned about the future of the America, of the United States. I feel very concerned about what makes a country great, which is education. For myself, I can say I'm the person I am today because of education. But when I hear what's going on, I'm very concerned about the young generation. I'm concerned about my daughter. Will one day, I myself will say, you need to go to school? Because if we cannot come together to say, "School must be the place for people to educate themselves so that they can become better citizens," what will be America twenty years from now? What will be the United States thirty years from now? As you guys, decision-makers, I would strongly encourage you not only to make the decision that is going to be beneficial for you, but make the decision that is going to be beneficial for your grandchildren and other generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Robinson? And after Al, Fran?
Al Robinson, twenty-seven-year resident, chairman, board members. Teachers with guns. It makes sense. An army is a deterrent. Two or three security guards might be able to help if in the right place by chance. Educators, on the average, have higher IQs than policemen. They're more stable, they're more dedicated, and more capable of making good choices. And also, they're tuned in to who the bad guys are in the schools. And it's usually not a stranger that walks in. It's somebody they know. And they know who's got the potential to do it. They know where the rent-a-cop is. He's out here. So I'll go in this way. I'm so disappointed in Sarasota, what they came up with. And I'm not surprised that the teachers' unions don't want it. And I've said, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. I think I set the record.
Thank you.
Fran?
Good evening, Chairman, school members, Superintendent. I'm here on behalf of Protect Our Public Schools, or POPS, Minnesota. And we strongly oppose the arming of classroom teachers as contained in the pending Florida legislation. We are a group of about four hundred strong from Sarasota in Manatee. POPS was established two years ago by retired educators. Our original mission was that of fighting the privatization of schools locally and in the state of Florida, while simultaneously mobilizing the population to demand more resources for public education. But when the Parkland tragedy occurred in February two thousand and eighteen, we realized that it could not work towards protecting and strengthening public education without protecting the children of Florida from gun and other violence. We therefore broaden our mission to include working towards the prevention of violence in our schools and communities. As a retired educator who taught in inner-city Hartford, Connecticut for ten years and five years in a charter Montessori school in Sarasota, I find the policy of arming teachers to be in the opposite direction of where we should be heading. We need fewer guns, not more. I believe that the only people carrying guns in school shootings are community resource officers. If I were a teacher in school today, I would not want my fellow teachers to be armed. First of all, the training of a fraction of the school resource officers is what the teachers will receive. Second of all, and most importantly, studies have shown that in the chaos of an active shooter situation, collateral damage can be high. At a recent POPS forum that we held on the topic of arming teachers, a leading school safety expert, Kurt Labarello, reported that a study completed in New York City showed that trained police officers in an active shooting situation miss their target eighty percent of the time. Just imagine if an armed teacher shot an innocent student or fellow teacher. Teachers are hired to teach and protect their students if an emergency rises, and this is their focus. Instead of guns and bullets, let's arm our teachers with well-funded resources, expand guidance, mental health, physical health programs, pay teachers a fair wage, provide them with job security and tenure, and other strategies to further our education can be fully individualized. Turn struggling schools into community partnership schools. And let's work towards passing legislation and/or Constitution ballot amendments that will implement comprehensive background checks for gun ownership and a ban on assault weapons. But as a starter, let's support the resolution stating that Manatee County- But as a starter, let's support the resolution stating that Manatee County Public Schools will not arm its teachers. And if you did see in today's Sarasota Herald Tribune, an editorial that said, "Don't Arm Teachers in Manatee County." Thank you.
Excuse me, what was your last name, ma'am?
Tulsky. T-U-L-S-K-I.
Fran Tulsky?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, I have two folks that signed up to speak for new business number six, and that is about this resolution. And so for those two people, I didn't know if they wanted to speak now or if they wanted to wait for numbers, that item, which, and that's Pat Barber and Sally Sells. If you'd like to wait, that's fine. You'd like to wait? I don't know Sally Sells. Do you want to go now or do you like to wait? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. This is so far out of my comfort zone, as you could probably tell by my voice, this stuff makes me extremely nervous, but I found it very important for me to be here. I'm a citizen of Manatee County. I'm a mother to a five-year-old. I cannot believe that we are here in 2019 discussing teachers carrying guns in our schools. This is just unfathomable to me. I was going to appeal to your humanity, your common sense. I was going to come up here with facts and stats, but as people back here have far more knowledge of all of that as far as I go, I would like to know, as far as the conservative members of this board, how are we going to pay for this? If you could see the list on the first day of my child's kindergarten class of all the supplies that my husband and I had to pay for, for her to go to school. We went with pencils when I was a child. I had to get earphones and pencils and crayons and paints and glue and goodness knows what else. Every month, once or twice a month, we have to take in snacks for our children because the cuts in the budget are constantly happening. Now you want us to be able to afford to not only supply guns, supply training, supply lock boxes, at least I would hope that the teachers would not have guns on their hips, and you also want to somehow come up with money in our budget for our liability insurance? This is one of the most, if not the most litigious country in the entire world. And you think if a school teacher is going to shoot a child, that everybody on this board and everybody in that school is not going to be sued? That's insane to me. You have to do the right thing. This is ridiculous. And now I'm all upset. Please do the right thing. Teachers are there to teach, they are there to encourage, they are there to support. They are not there to take out an active shooter. Please do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll hold on to Pat Barber for item number six, and that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Our next item of business is approval of minutes. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes for March 12th, 2019, School Board Workshop and Regular Meeting and Public Hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the superintendent's recommendation of approval of the minutes. This is our discussion. The chair hearing none. The chair will call the question. All those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay, it passes unanimously. The next item of business is the consent items.
Time's up, Mr. Chair.
Your time's up.
Okay. We've only been doing this since about 11:00 this morning, so. Yeah, okay. Did you want to take a break after? Okay. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, sir. I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for April 9th, 2019.
So moved.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none. The chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. This passes unanimously. The, okay, the chair is going to call for a five-minute recess at this time, okay? And we'll, well, let's say, we're going to resume at 7:30. Do I hear a motion to do that? Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope, it's seconded by, okay, seconded by Board Member Golden. Is there discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. It passes unanimously. Okay, we're in recess until 7:30. Thank you.
You haven't been drinking water since 11:00 AM. I need to go.
I didn't get a chance to tell you. I think I told you. I met with Manatee County last week. You know, I had to. She thought my family, we made a little discussion. It's very good.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, we have, please sit down at 7:30. We're going to resume the meeting. Thank you very much. The next item of business is under new business, and it's regarding an approval to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory. Is there a motion or a recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory Board's alternative to opt, to out-of-school suspension or ATOS program grant effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, in the amount of $402,974.
Is it a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
It's moved by Board Member Hope. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Board Member Kennedy.
I was a little fast on the, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. We can swap.
Okay, you can fight it out after the meeting. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing, excuse me, Vice Chair Messenger.
Yeah, just that I'm abstaining from this and the next item because I am a member of the Children's Services Advisory Board for which these contracts stem from, so.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Vice Chair Messenger is abstaining tonight on these two items. So, that being said, is there any further discussion concerning this item of business? The chair hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is approval to apply, accept, and expend your choice grant, October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. Is there a recommendation of the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory Board. It's your choice. Students Against Negative Decisions Grant, effective October 1, 2019.
Okay, we have, please sit down at 7:30. We're going to resume the meeting. Okay, thank you very much. The next item of business is under new business, and it's regarding an approval to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory. Is there a motion or a recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory Board's alternative to opt, to out-of-school suspension or ATOS program grant effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, in the amount of $402,974.
Is it a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Oh, moved.
It's moved by Board Member Hope. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Board Member Kennedy.
I was a little fast on the...
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. We can swap.
Okay, you can fight it out after the meeting. Is there any discussion? The Chair hearing, excuse me, Vice Chair Messenger.
Yeah, just that I'm abstaining from this and the next item because I am a member of the Children's Services Advisory Board for which these contracts stem from, so...
Okay, let the record reflect that Board Vice Chair Messenger is abstaining tonight on these two items. That being said, is there any further discussion concerning this item of business? The Chair hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is approval to apply, accept, and expend your choice grant, October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. Is there a recommendation of the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Service Advisory Board. It's your choice. Students Against Negative Decisions Grant effective October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, not to exceed $282,000.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Board Member Hope. Is there any discussion? The Chair hearing none. The Chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Signify by saying nay. Chair hearing none. This item of business passes approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item of business is...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
There was one abstention on that vote, I believe.
I'm sorry. I appreciate the counsel bringing it to my attention. The vote is four zero with one exemption. Correct the record. Thank you. Next item of business is approval of new job description and position of director strategic planning and district initiation, I guess.
Initiatives.
Initiatives. Okay. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of director strategic planning and district initiatives.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Board Member Hope. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there discussion? The Chair hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This passes unanimously. And the next item is consideration of resolution regarding the arming of non-security personnel on school district properties. Now, this is going to be a discussion. If there is a feeling that there should be some resolution to be considered, it will be considered at the next board meeting. But there is, this is an opportunity to consider whether this board next week would consider a resolution, and not that we're going to decide that tonight, but we would be making a resolution at the board meeting two weeks from now. I guess it's two weeks from now. So, and this is a consideration. This is not an action item. I think that, excuse me, what we have heard tonight are very concerned, you know, citizens. Yes?
I'm sorry. I just have one question.
Yes.
Since we're not doing our typical motion and everything because this is just discussion, we do have one person that has signed up for public comment.
Right.
In what order are we willing to go?
Let's hear what the public has to say and call them forward.
Okay.
Yes.
I do have a motion to make on this, so could we deal with my potential motion and then do public comment?
I think we ought to hear the public comment first.
You're the only one. Come front and center.
You're part of the family.
Please identify yourself.
Good evening. For the record.
Yes.
My name is Pat Barber, and I'm the President of the Manatee Education Association. And I think that you all know that our state affiliate and all the unions that are connected to that state affiliate have been working very hard to oppose the legislation that would allow local school boards to have this decision to make. We do not believe that among the many duties that teachers and other school employees already have, that they should have added to those duties the responsibility of carrying a firearm. Schools are extremely active and busy places, and having firearms at the side of employees whose main responsibility is to nurture, provide emotional support for well-being of children and students should not be something that is added to those responsibilities. I know very well that there are teachers and other employees out there who would step up because they would feel it's their responsibility to also provide physical safety for those students. But I believe the legislature constantly shirks its responsibility to provide the appropriate funding in order to provide the necessities for school districts to do what's right in our public schools. There are many other things that can be done to keep our schools safe, keep other weapons out of our schools besides going to the easy solution, which is always to put that extra responsibility onto teachers because they are the ones who already work in our school system. I know when you look at those Parkland tapes, you look at them in isolation. You don't look at them as part of the whole of what is going on in our schools every day. This is not a new issue for me. I have been in my role for 32 years. I have been concerned about the issue of school safety since before Columbine. So I hope that you will not decide to arm our school personnel. But before that, I hope the legislature will come to its senses and not pass a law that will allow you to have that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Okay. The Chair is going to recognize Mr. Kennedy. What I believe is, in this discussion, if it appears that there's a consensus that there should be some form of resolution presented, or resolutions of choice presented at the board meeting, you know, two weeks from now, we will put that on the agenda, you know, for an action item for, you know, adopting, you know, a resolution if the board feels that a resolution is appropriate and reflective of the will, you know, of the board. And so with that being said, and I think, you know, to implement what I'm just saying, I have elicited, you know, from other districts, including Sarasota, you know, resolutions, you know, concerning this, which I would be, you know, sending out, you know, to board members for their, you know, thinking about, you know, prior to our meeting, you know, two weeks from now, as to whether they think it would be appropriate and they would feel comfortable, if not compelled, into approving that resolution as an action, you know, of this board. And that would be included as an attachment to the agenda of the meeting two weeks from now. So it would be something or various things that the public would have a right to, or the opportunity, you know, to view as to what this board might be doing two weeks from now. So with that being said, Mr. Kennedy, you...
Mr. Chair, I see this a little bit differently.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that this board adopt tonight a resolution that I have drafted, which addresses the policy of, let me make this clear. My motion is the following. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution claiming, or signaling, whatever the right verb is here, a motion that we adopt this resolution signaling to the community that if given the choice, this board will not adopt a policy of arming teachers.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion by Mr. Kennedy. I'm not exactly sure of the wording of it.
We've got copies for everybody.
Okay. And it's been seconded by Board Member Golden, and I think it's... Now, okay, what is being handed out and by our clerk, this is the first I've seen of it. I don't think that anybody...
Same with me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't think anybody in the audience has seen it or the media has seen it. I'm not trying to be negative about it, but this is kind of gets back to what I was saying earlier, you know, to have, you know, the community to maybe decide if this is, you have to view it and comment on this in particular. It's not verbatim what Board Member Kennedy said. I'm not saying that what he said is not the thrust of what is said in writing here, but I haven't had a chance to look at it nor has any other board member or any other member of the public to see this. So I don't know if the Superintendent has seen it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Mr. Kennedy sent it to me this afternoon, and he and I have not had an opportunity to talk about it. I looked at it briefly, and I do have some remarks, and I'd like to offer those because it may affect your discussion. The operative language in his resolution, the now-therefore clause, says that, in essence, that it's the policy of the school board to not adopt a policy allowing the arming of its teachers. And just as a matter of legality, a board can't take an action which prevents a future board from overseeing, overtaking, undoing that action. What they say is one board can't bind a future board. But let me offer this as an alternative, and instead of focusing on a resolution, I suggest the board focus on what its policy should be, and then an appropriate resolution can be drafted to reflect what the board's consensus is.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. The Chair recognized, is Board Member Golden?
I was the one that brought up the issue of having a resolution. And when I brought this up a couple of school meetings ago, I was asked to delay consideration for the same reasons we are being talked about tonight. We didn't have anything in writing, and we haven't had a chance to look at it, haven't had a chance to discuss it, you name it. At this point, I'm going to withdraw my second to the motion that has been proposed by Mr. Kennedy because I don't think that it goes far enough, and I think it continues a discussion that we are determined to politicize. I didn't bring this up for political gain nor negativity. This is a heartfelt, heart-deep issue in the minds of many of the people that have come up here tonight. And so I don't know what the status is now that I've withdrawn my second, Attorney Dye, because I do have a motion that I want to make. See, if I've withdrawn my second, is there a motion before us?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What it means...
Chair recognizes Mr. Dye.
Yes, what it means is that Mr. Kennedy's motion can have another board member second it, but if no other board member seconds it, then it dies for lack of a second.
Is there a second to Mr. Kennedy's motion at this time? The Chair hears no second to that motion at this time, so that motion dies. May I make a suggestion to Board Member Golden that, I'm inferring from his remarks, that he would like us to consider, you know, some other motion at a future time, at the next meeting. And I think we all, you know, want to have this fully addressed, you know, at the next meeting at least. And, you know, for, you know, all board members, you know, scratch their head and, you know, put together what they think is the proper way to address this issue, and try to have it to the clerk in the next, you know, five days, and all of the proposals be, you know, put on the public record, you know, for review, and something, one of them or something similar to them, we would have the opportunity to, you know, vote on and consider, you know, at the next meeting with the public, you know, having read, you know, various proposals. I think that there is a feeling by a majority, you know, on this board that it should be addressed in a proper way, that there is a response to most people in the community that, of a concern about, you know, teachers, you know, having, you know, to be armed. And the fellow who's talking right now was, one time had NRA on his mom's car's back window and went through, you know, rifle training at church camp, and I've slept with the, you know, weapons, automatic weapons, revolvers. And so I'm not a firearm virgin. And at the same time, I respect all of those who respect firearms. So don't read me that I'm anti-firearms by any means. But I'm pro-responsible, and I'm also pro, you know, safety of the kids and staff in all of our schools. Well, anyway, that's where I'm coming from, you know, personally. And so there not being any...
No, sir.
You know, further motion at this time?
I wanted to do it that way. I do have a motion.
Just for comment.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Okay.
And you are responding to me.
Okay. I think Mr. Hope's put his arm up, or hand up, but let me go with, Board Member Golden, go ahead. Recognize you for comment.
I move that the Manatee County School Board go on record in opposition to the legislation pending in the Florida Legislature.
Second. Sorry, if you were done.
No, because I'm not going to get caught up in whether they can arm them or whether they put them in lock boxes or whatever it is that they are trying to use to justify this. This is wrong, period. And that's my motion, that this school board take a stand that they oppose the legislation that's pending, whatever that is, whatever it calls for. If it relates to arming teachers, we oppose that, as have many other school boards that have done that, and in fact, as has the Florida School Board Association. That's my motion.
I'll second that again.
Okay, we have a motion, you know, made by Board Member Golden, which is seconded by Board Member Kennedy. The... I don't know if I can repeat that motion, but...
I'm not sure which of the 1,700 bills that have been filed he's referring to.
Okay, we'll discuss that motion right now. Mr. Hope, or Board Member Hope, would you like to comment on this motion that's been made?
I would, Mr. Chairman. I would ask my fellow board members to vote this motion down, not because of my personal opinion, but first and foremost, we don't have a bill that's been passed by either chamber. Right now, we have a law that allows for guardians. It's specific to the types of guardians that we... It's specific to the types of guardians that we can employ. We've done that. This board made it, took a position, and I led it. I was chairman when we took the position that we wanted armed law enforcement in our schools, deputies and police officers. That was before the legislation was passed. The legislation passed, the funding was there. This board had to assess with our law enforcement partners how we were going to meet the requirements of the law. And we stepped up to the plate, and we workshopped it. We had executive sessions with our law enforcement partners, and we discussed it, and we debated it, and we arrived at what I believe was the right decision for Manatee County at the time. There are facts in this case that I don't believe we should necessarily debate in public at this time. Our law enforcement partners have evaluated each one of our buildings. Engineering firms have gone into each one of our buildings through the lens of how to protect our students and staff. This board has yet to have that follow-up meeting with our law enforcement leadership and with our facilities engineers to better understand, based on the occurrences at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, should an event like that occur in any one of our schools, how do we mitigate the loss of life? There were a number of teachers who were shot and some fatally killed. They were killed after crews had encounters with safety monitors who were faculty and coaches and otherwise on that campus. And I do believe, Mr. Chairman, that we should have another executive session. We should call in our sheriff, our police chiefs, and we should have yet a. We have not had a briefing or a discussion after this report has been issued. It's nearly 500 pages. There's a federal study that was done. There are recommendations. And I believe we have a fiduciary responsibility to consider all of the facts in the recent Florida shooting, the recommendations of law enforcement, and for each one of our schools, each one of our 61 schools. What do we need to do? How many guardians do we need? What do we need in the way of law enforcement? Should an evil person with the type of weapon that you were familiar with, with your military service, make it onto one of our campuses? The commission made it clear, another shooting will occur in a school. It's a matter of time and where and how many people will be killed. It's horrible that we're having this discussion. But when you read through the timeline of the report, you watch the videos, there were numerous failures. But I will tell you, Mr. Hickson, a faculty member at that school who was shot, went to the ground, crawled to the other side of the hall to barricade himself. And a minute and a half later, crews walked by him and finished him off. Ms. Pollak, thriving young senior, was shot. She was wounded. She and a friend crawled to another location. After crews encountered three faculty members who were not armed, and he shot them, killing at least one of them, he went back by that little girl and her friend, and he shot her multiple times. This was, this went on for minutes. There were encounters with unarmed staff members. They were poorly trained. They didn't do what they should have done in recognizing the potential. But the mere fact is this occurred. And what we're going to find out is some of the things that occurred in that school, the physical structure of it, the way he shot through windows and doors. I will tell you, when we have an executive session, I've gone to some of our new construction sites. And if a person like that went on one of our campuses, and we had a guardian on one part of the campus and a school resource officer in the other in parish, Florida, some distance away from the police station and the sheriff's office, and shot through drywall into classrooms, we would have the similar situation. I don't believe this should be made emotionally. I think it should be based on facts. I think we should rely on experts. I'm not an expert in this, but I've read this report five times. And it's heartbreaking what occurred. Thirty-four people were shot, 17 were killed, teachers and students. Seventeen of them were shot after three encounters with unarmed faculty members and monitors. Twelve of them after the school resource officer was outside the building. I do believe we need our law enforcement partners, who are experts in our facilities, to advise us of how, number one, to comply with whatever the new law is. But members to pass a motion that basically makes a stand. If each one of us wants to go on the record individually regarding our opinion, that makes sense. But for the board to make a motion when we haven't had a security briefing with our law enforcement partners in months, in months, we have not heard from them the evaluation of our facilities and our needs based on the facts. And I'm thinking about those teachers who may have been familiar with firearms, who looked at the man, and he finished them off. And I think about Mr. Hickson. Had he had a firearm, there were 17 other people that were shot after that that may not have been shot. There were teachers that were killed. There were students that were killed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will try to be brief. Fear is an emotion also. And I am not trying to appeal to the emotions of people with respect to the loss that occurs when death happens. What I am trying to get my fellow board members to appreciate is that the overwhelming opposition of teachers, parents, and the community at large is that they do not want their children going to school where teachers are armed. It's not a question of whether it's a good idea or whether it makes it more secure or whether it's something that the experts in school security approve of. We who have been elected to represent the people of Manatee County have been told by the people of Manatee County that have come before us, that have written us, that have called us, we don't care what the experts say. We're not interested in what the facts are as it relates to that tragic incident there at that high school. What we are saying is we do not want our teachers in this county to be in classrooms in this county with weapons. Now, either you support that or you don't. I support that. That's why I made the motion. And I think that I have a second from someone that who sees that. Now, we can talk about this all night long. Let me hurry up and say, there is no right and there is no wrong. We keep trying to reduce things to black and white, for and against. The bottom line is that the overwhelming expressions that I have received from the people in this community is that they do not think that this should be a community where teachers are allowed to be in classrooms. And they have asked us to transmit that message to the legislature, which is now considering that. Two weeks from now, we will be trying to figure out how to get it overturned in the courts as opposed to now expressing what I would like to think any legislator would want to know, what their constituents are thinking. We all know what the experts say. We all know that if this man were armed, that there are opinions that he could have stopped the massacre, maybe. But all we really have to work with is this reality. And it's real. The people that are here are being real. They don't want their teachers in this county to be armed. And all they've asked us to do as a school board, a functioning school board, is to transmit that message to the legislature. I heard several people come up here tonight and say, we don't want you all to vote to arm teachers. We're not taking that vote. We don't have that authority. We are going to be bound by what the legislature decides. What I'm trying to do is to get this stopped before the legislature decides, instead of, as we often do, do it afterwards and then proclaim we can't do any more than that. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I just, I don't see why. And with all due respect to Dr. Hope's and to all of the other board members, there's no right and wrong here. There is just doing what you think you would like to see. Look right there. Look, look. There's a man in this room with a gun. His job is to make sure that anybody that comes in that door does not hurt us. That's his job. He's not a security guard. He's not a member of the board. He's not a member of the staff. His job is singular and solely to provide protection for us. Teachers are not for providing protection. Teachers are providing security. And this man gave security to that school with his life. I will not cheapen it by saying that if he had a gun, it would have been different. He didn't have a gun. It is what it is, and now we, the living, have to decide how are we going to honor that memory? I will not honor it by saying we need to arm more people in our schools. That's not what I feel.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
No, 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 no. Let's be respectful of the process.
Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reverend Golden, I want to thank you for the, kind of bringing some clarity to the moment this resolution. It's my first attempt at one, and apparently I screwed it up, so. But Reverend Golden, you've gotten to the heart of the matter. And the reason, and you came, you're right, there is no right or wrong. Some things were said during public comment tonight that I could not disagree with more. But I certainly respect the right of that person to stand up and give their opinion on this issue. And the reason that we have received more email in the past week than I think I've seen in my entire school board career thus far is because people are waiting. This is about the safety of students. It's about the safety of our employees. And people want to know where we stand. This bill is, there are two bills moving through that show no sign of stopping. Dr. Hope's is right. There's nothing really that has been passed or signed by the governor. But in my opinion, it's just a matter of time before that does happen. And this, you know, I can't believe there's something that I actually, Rick Scott and I are on the same page on something. And he also believed a year ago that arming teachers as a school safety measure was a really bad idea. So, I have to give Governor Scott credit, former Governor Scott, credit for that. But now the idea is back, but with the caveat that it will be up to local school boards. Therefore, the community is now looking to us to say, if and when this does come down, where are you all going to be on this? Because, for example, parents have to, granted, you know, we'll probably know in two or three weeks, but parents have to make decisions about next year. Madison, right? Madison touched on the anxiety that students are living with every day. And we're all around students. And you especially hear it from the high school kids about school safety, about the perimeter of their campus. So, our students, our parents, our community, advocates on both sides of this debate, although Reverend Golden alluded to this, this seems to me like overwhelmingly, our community, and I think a wider community, does not support this. But in this moment, Manatee County wants to know, where does, when and if this comes, where does this board stand? And I think to push it down the road for two more weeks so we can think about it and talk about it. And maybe you really do need two more weeks to make a decision on this. But we've been dealing with this since, you know, before Columbine. And then it, you know, it ratcheted up at Sandy Hook, and then it, you know, and then with Parkland. We've been dealing with this in our faces for over a year, and this idea for over a year. So, it's not like this is a new idea. I think we, as a board, just have to show some guts and tell this community where we are, excuse me, on this issue. Sorry, it's caught my throat. Thanks, Mr. Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Board Member Messenger, would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Sure. All right, well, all the reporters wanted to know. Keep calling me and texting me. I got a text this weekend. "Messenger, oh, messenger, where are you?" I don't know if that's a direct quote. And really, I've thought a lot about this because I have a little girl that's going to pre-K next year, and I have a one-year-old. She turns one on Saturday. But I also grew up in an extremely gun-friendly household. My dad was a competition shooter. I grew up around guns. I grew up, I went to ammunition factories. That was how I grew up. So, to say that I'm comfortable would be an understatement. So, then I think about what I taught. I taught kindergarten, and I taught first grade. And even though I have all of that knowledge, and when I was a kid, I went through all kinds of classes. My parents made sure that I knew gun safety. I went through all kinds of classes to know gun safety. Now, most kids maybe don't go through those kinds of things, but since my family was so gun-friendly, they wanted to make sure that I knew how to be safe around guns. But as a teacher, even with all of that knowledge, would I want to be armed in a kindergarten classroom? And the answer is no. I would not want that. And that's where I have to come from at this, I guess. And when I taught kindergarten and I taught first grade, and we'd have to go through those kinds of drills and try to explain to the kids in the most kid-friendly way possible. And then I'd have to sit there and think about, okay, well, if this was real, what would I do to protect these kids? How would I help? How can I, knowing, and knowing that I'd have to give my life, knowing that I'm willing to do that. So, then when somebody comes up here and says, well, that's not the job of a teacher, well, now it is. Now, it really is, guys. Whether we want it to be or not, it ends up being that. And so, it's been a very difficult decision. I don't support arming our teachers. However, I also do not support the motion that was made tonight by Mr. Golden for a multitude of reasons. My number one reason is I believe wholeheartedly in local control. I believe everybody here has the right to come down here and tell me exactly what you want, and I will amplify that for you. I will do my very best to speak for you. And that's how local control works. It's working right now. They're asking the board to make the decision rather than the state. For me, that's a win for us. We get to make the decision, and I am closer to you than any of those representatives. So, for me to say I'm against the legislation when this is the one time when they actually allow us to make the decision instead of coming down on high and telling us and then not funding it, I can't necessarily be for that as well. I would much rather have the option here where I can hear all the constituents, read every email I've gotten, take every phone call, and speak for them and say, I get it. You don't want it? Cool, I got that. I will stand behind that. But I don't want to say to the legislature, I don't like that legislation, because then they're just going to pick for us instead of letting us pick. And if you went, I don't remember if you went to the council government's meeting, but if you were there, one of the things that all the different governments that were there spoke of was the loss of local control, the loss of home rule. And that's, all the cities and the counties are all saying the exact same thing. Instead of it being decided by local communities where we can really listen to and advocate for our citizens, instead, that is being taken away and put at the state. And the state is continually making the decisions for everyone without as much input. And the state is continually making the decisions for everyone without as much input from the community. And we know that there were tons of people that showed up when this bill was going through, and they weren't listened to at all. But now there are people here that get to make that difference, and that's because of the legislation being written as an option. So I do not want to oppose that because I support us having that option. I support the local control for whatever the decision is. And if you've gone through all these trainings, you know. We get told, "Oh, this is how much money you have to spend on buses, but you've got to do all this other stuff to get the... To spend it," and you spend double whatever they say. All I'm saying is I support the local control. But if the point is to say where we stand, I do not support army teachers. I've got a multitude of other things. My whole entire thing is full of notes, but my five minutes are up. I could keep talking.
You did a fine job.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger, for a very passionate statement. Okay, we'll go around. Board Member Golden is recognized. Thank you, Ms. Messenger, for your very eloquent explanation with respect to the division in your spirit. If this were a matter of local control, I would probably agree with you. The problem that I'm having, though, is that the people that died didn't die in this county. And the legislature that is preparing to make a decision is not giving local control over this issue to the local school boards. What they are setting is statewide policy that gives options. I don't disagree with any of that. What I'm simply saying is that we have had a number of people who have come here and who have asked us, on their behalf, not to support what the state is doing at the state level, but specifically on their behalf, to let the state know they disagree. And several other school boards, who probably feel the same way as we do about local control, have already agreed to this. As a matter of fact, the Florida School Board Association, where you're right. I just went for my training, where our chair just went to be a part of the legislative discussion, and so did Mr. Hope's. So the issue still boils down to, in the position that we're in, what are we willing to say officially? And I've already said, there's no right and wrong. If this motion fails, it simply fails because the majority of us officially do not want to make a statement to the legislature about arming teachers. That's the only capacity that we have here. That's what a motion does. It makes it official. And I'm simply saying to the people here, officially, I stand behind what I have said personally. I don't enjoy the luxury of having private thoughts and public thoughts. I'm an elected public official. When I was an assistant public defender in Daytona Beach for another life, I was accosted by a man with a gun who put it to my temple, and but for the grace of God. But for the grace of God, I wouldn't even be able to be here now. But because of God's grace, I can sit here and tell you, I'm glad I didn't have a gun that day. I might have killed him, but it might have made it easier for him to kill me. Life and death are such a fragile thing, and you get very few opportunities to officially address it. This is one of those times. I'm not diminishing anybody else's feelings up here. I'm just simply trying to tell you what mine are and why. Because death is irreversible and irrevocable. I can't bring any of those lives back that have already been lost. But I can tell the legislature of this state, from my official capacity, no, that is just not a good idea.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Okay, Board Member Hope's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to Mr. Golden's last statement, he has every opportunity to go up and talk face-to-face with the legislators and let them know, in your official capacity as a school board member, how you feel. I am proud of Vice Chair Messenger in the way she presented what I could not have said any better. Because I will tell you, I had one-on-one conversations with leadership when we were in Tallahassee last week. And I'll tell you what I heard. What I heard is what Ms. Messenger, Vice Chair Messenger, is referring to, that they have made their decision. They have weighed the evidence. Their commission has reported back to them. And my concern is, is that if enough school boards take the position and pass a motion or a resolution like has been discussed, they will take it upon themselves, whether it's through mandates, whether it's through creating the cost of meeting mandates, to get what they want. I think that this is going to go through unless too many school boards give pushback. It's going to allow the local school boards to make these decisions. This legislation is more about rural counties, the Gadsens, the Leavies, the, you know, small rural panhandle counties that may not have the law enforcement to provide adequate protection. And the legislature, right now, is creating an environment where the local school boards, the elected officials in each county, can do what we did when we weighed whether or not we were going to use the Guardian program and hire, hire staff to exclusively provide armed security. And I think it is dangerous. And I don't think we've heard from everyone. I will tell you, my colleagues on the board, we've had far less serious issues where people had to go to the second floor because we had so many people here that wanted to attend the meeting and speak. And I don't see that. I mean, we had multiple meetings with people lined up outside over the name of a high school, the name of an elementary school, and that issue did not touch as many lives as this one touches. So I don't believe we've heard from the majority of the population out there. I've gotten the emails, and maybe they only sent me one-tenth of what they sent all of you because maybe they assumed what my position was going to be. But, Mr. Chairman, I ask again that this motion be defeated. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Since Dr. Hope's took it upon himself to share with the public what I should have done, let me share with Dr. Hope's that, in fact, after I finished the training that I went...
The board recognizes you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board Member Golden.
That after I did conclude the training that I went there for, I joined 150 children that sat on the steps of the Capitol on Wednesday afternoon to see whether or not their voices really mattered. And I'm glad to hear Dr. Hope say, "It doesn't matter what we decide here. It's already been decided, and then what we'll have to do is simply live with that or figure out a way around it." Well, that may be true. But if it is true, it won't be because of my lack of trying. I stood there on the steps of that old Capitol with those 150 kids from around the state and with some of the very legislators that are going to vote on this, and I said then and I say now, "This is wrong. This is not what people do who are trying to nurture children and raise them and trying to give them a certain value." And I said that officially. So I won't bite my tongue about that. I did that Wednesday afternoon, just what you're suggesting. I was there. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a meeting with the leadership to express to them directly what I felt, but I did what I could, which is what I'm asking all of us to do.
Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. Gina, as usual, brought nuance to the table very wisely. And I do agree with you that this is really a unique opportunity from the legislature that we get to make a decision for ourselves and for our county. However, Dr. Hope's, I would disagree with you because if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that if enough school boards express their dissatisfaction with the idea of arming teachers, they're going to remove that local control and just force us to do it? Am I hearing you correctly?
Mr. Chairman.
Board recognizes...
There has been some discussion and a possible amendment that would leave it to the sheriff. As they did with the Guardian program, it should be no secret that we were put into a position where we didn't have the funds to hire armed law enforcement officers. And remember, there was a lot of pushback from school boards, even around Guardians, because it was staff members. So I'm just telling you the political realities. I mean, the... I do believe, that's my opinion, from 30 years in Tallahassee and discussions that I've had, that we run the risk, we run the risk of control being limited in our ability in how we were to meet certain requirements. The report has a worksheet that can be used as a calculator that looks at the number of buildings, the geographic area, the number of students. That could easily become part of legislation that says, "You will have armed security trained that completes the requirements as calculated in this matrix." And I will tell you that if we were to have to rely on that matrix, especially at our high schools, I don't see how the sheriff could even train enough officers. I'm giving you my read on it, that right now, we're in a much better position with us being able to decide what is best for Manatee County and the school board in Levy County, in Gulf County, in Bay County, St. John's County, to be able to determine what's best for them.
Okay. Mr. Minor?
Yeah, Board... Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I see this as if enough school boards express opposition to the idea of arming classroom teachers, that this could potentially fall away. And you hit on another point, too, because as the emails have rolled in and calls and talking to people, like, I've really come to, as a former classroom teacher, that if we have a teacher in Manatee County who would like to be armed on the job, they should go work for the Sheriff's Department or the Bradenton Police, and they can return to campus as a security officer, but not as a classroom teacher. I don't think anybody... Gina's right. I mean, it's a new reality that we live in, and classroom teachers already have to be everything. Now, we're expected to be armed guards. But just as a matter of, I think Liv said earlier, this is just antithetical to the idea of education is the idea of arming that leader in front of their kids. And, Dr. Hope's, you hit it, like, if there's a matrix and we have to have armed, trained security personnel, we'll rise to whatever we have to do, whatever the legislature puts upon us. I just think, as a school board individually in Manatee County, as school boards around the state, we have to join together and say, "This is a really bad idea, so please just drop it, and let's be productive." I really don't think this is even a partisan issue. This doesn't seem like a right-left issue to me. There's a lot of Republicans I talked to who are like, including, well, I don't want to name any names, but including somebody who's a decision-maker in this process who says, "Yeah, you know, I'm going to go along with the flow here because I've got to do what leadership tells me to do, but I really don't think this is a good idea." Because that's the way things work in Tallahassee. You've got to line up behind the leadership, or, you know, you lose your committee assignments, your bills don't get heard. So this is, I think, being kind of shepherded through Tallahassee by a small group of special interest-connected folks, when the vast majority of Floridians, and I think the vast majority of Manatee County, whether or not they've sent us an email or expressed an opinion, this is just a very unpopular idea. And again, I think we, as board members, need to take a stand, joining other school boards in Florida who have taken a similar stand. Now, I haven't seen one school board yet come out and pass a resolution or a consensus that, yes, we want to arm teachers. It hasn't happened yet. So, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, I call a question.
Procedurally, you know, we have a board member who says, "Call the question." I think the question he's calling is a motion by Board Member Golden that was seconded by Board Member Kennedy. I don't remember all the details of it. And that was, you know, a concern that I expressed earlier about all this detail. I'm not sure if I can say... You were calling, you know, what question? What are we voting on? What is the public voting on?
I can review it.
Okay. My concern with the motion is that I don't think it fully provides what I think most of the community is talking about. I think that most of the community is talking about limiting persons on our public school board campuses that have firearms to those who are in law enforcement. We're talking about, I think, they are something more than teachers. I think they're talking about, you know, people in the cafeteria, the bus drivers, more than that. And as I recall, the motion that was made did not include that. And that's why I like to have things in writing. And that's why, you know, for people to look at and say, "You know, you don't want that in," or "You want to add this in," you know, before this board, you know, takes, you know, some action. I will say that I heard things similar to what Board Member Hope's talked about as a rationalization, you know, for this bill was to allow much smaller, you know, counties the option, an option of using non-law enforcement persons to, you know, have guns on campuses, that option. Board Member Messenger talked about option local control. I see Board Member Golden's motion is directed to sending a message, you know, to Tallahassee about to oppose current legislation before we've actually seen, you know, the final legislation. Now, that isn't bad. You know, are we talking about sending a message, or are we talking about really being opposed to teachers and other personnel not, you know, making a statement by this board as to teachers and other non-law enforcement personnel not being permitted by this board to have firearms on our campuses?
If that's a question, the answer's both.
I'm not recognizing these interruptions.
I apologize.
I respect, you know, the choices, like Board Member Messenger was talking about, of local control. You know, I oppose... You know, I oppose our allowing non-law enforcement personnel to have firearms on our campuses. That's where I come from. This is the guy who learned to shoot, you know, by the NRA. The old NRA that wasn't really dominated by firearms manufacturers, as I think it is now. But I don't think that, that is not how I heard the motion that was made and seconded. I've already expressed, I'd like to have something, that's where I come from. And I think what I'm saying is, I think there is a majority, you know, on this board who, who thinks that way, too, that we do not want to have non-law enforcement of people having firearms on any property of the school district. And that's how I feel about that. But that motion wasn't made. Okay. So, there's been, there can be room for another motion to reflect that. I think, Mr. Kennedy, what I just said reflects your feeling.
Sounds like it to me.
I think, I think that reflects the feelings of Board Member Messenger.
You're saying, all employees except security personnel?
No, I'm saying, non, any non-law enforcement, those in law enforcement, you know, security personnel, I don't want somebody to say, well, I'm a Guardian, okay, we're, we're going to make these teachers all Guardians or something, but unless you're authorized otherwise by law enforcement, you know, to have firearms, it's not allowed on any property of this school district. I don't care if it's a football stadium, I don't care if it's, you know, wherever it is, we're not going to say that that's allowed.
Mr. Chair.
Does that respond to? I'm just trying to address a question right here.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is, all people, unless they are security, is that what you're saying?
I, I would.
Security or police officers or whomever?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm maybe defining security a little bit narrowly.
That's the lawyer in you.
Okay.
Are you asking my opinion of that?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that as well. I'm, I'm definitely in favor of not arming teachers, and that is really what this legislation addresses.
No, it, no, it doesn't.
Well, there was already, I, my understanding was that there was already allowance for other employees. This does specifically address teachers. That is my understanding. Am I incorrect?
I think you're incorrect. So, with the, so.
I'm correct.
That, that's, that's, that's one of the problems, that we don't have the legislation in front of us.
I agree.
But, Mr. Chair. Okay. Board Member Golden.
What we do have is what you have just articulated, is a motion that you think could and should be made and would be accepted by the majority of this board. Given your opinion and your statements, I move that your language be substituted for mine.
Second.
What's that language?
The language, now, I don't want to get into whether we could decipher what he said.
We all just heard what he said.
We had just heard what he just said.
Okay.
Because my language was not precise enough. I move that my language be withdrawn and his be substituted. And I believe that we have the record over there as to what he had said.
I, I, I'll restate where I was coming from, that this board take a, a position, you know, to the community that it opposes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe you did have a motion, basically a motion to amend Reverend Golden's original motion. It was seconded.
Okay.
That is the motion that's before the body right now.
Okay, fine. Okay.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hope's.
I, I think. We made this motion, and I made a, I, I called the question. We, a motion was made, a motion was seconded, there was debate, and I'm just trying to get things in the right posture.
Okay. I, I, I think that, Mr. Hope, you're, you're correct. There was a motion made by you to call the question. The mover of that motion has now amended his motion, okay? And the amendment to the original motion has been seconded by Mr. Kennedy, okay? And so the, I think the issue on the table right now is whether, you know, this board will approve Reverend Gold, you know, Board Member Golden's motion, you know, to amend his motion, which has been seconded. Okay? Now, I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Mr., I, I would like the motion read, because quite frankly, during the oral pontification, I do not know exactly what the motion to amend states. And for the record, and for proper procedure, I would like to know what I'm voting on. And I, I don't. I would like, I would like your, Mr. Golden's motion to amend, he said, he, he moved an oral pontification as an amendment. I would like to at least know the language of the amendment to the original motion.
Let me try, because.
Oh, just a second.
That I amend your language. I take your language.
Okay. Any other statements? Yeah, the board, the Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I think what we're trying to get down to here is, what we oppose, is what's new about the legislation this year, is that it expands the employees who could fall under the Aaron Weiss Guardian program to instructional personnel. And that's what's different this year than it was last year. And I think what this board wants to express is that we do not support the expansion of that definition to include instructional personnel.
But this is what the Chair said.
Exactly. I'm just.
That is not what he said.
It's not. I mean, this has gone off its rails. We, like, like the Mr.
Okay.
Chairman said, we really need to have a discussion about this, and we need to see things in print, because this is not a way, I mean.
Okay. Okay. I, I've given my analysis. I think that part of Board Member Golden's, you know, motion is directed to sending a message, not just to our community, but to Tallahassee. The message to the community is that this board opposes non-law enforcement persons, you know, having firearms on school district, you know, property. I think that's what I've said. And that is a message, you know, to the community, how we stand on, on the firearms. And it's also a, a message, in a way, you know, to Tallahassee, that we don't go, we're not in favor, be it teachers, people working in the cafeteria, bus drivers, mechanics, you're not going to have firearms on school district property.
Mr. Chair, just as a clarification, I just spoke with the clerk, and she does not have an articulated motion that she can read back to the body.
Okay.
It was part of a long commentary on the discussion tonight, and then that was moved, but there's really no core.
Okay, well, I, it sounds like it would be helpful if I, as concisely as possible, state what I intended to state before, was that this board, you know, has, takes a position that it opposes anyone who is not law enforcement officials, you know, to be with firearms on school district property. That this board opposes that. I'm going to ask the clerk if they got that down, and I, I'm going to ask Board Member Golden, is that, you know, the thrust of what you wish this board to have adopted?
That, that's the first half, because the second half, you said, is that we would send that same message to the legislature.
I didn't have that in there. Now, they, they're going to get a message, but of how this board feels, you know, about that.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's good.
But, but we're, we're keeping it, you know, how this board feels. And a message is received by the community, Tallahassee receives a message by taking that stand, if this board adopts that. Now, I think it does, does anybody not understand that, to vote yea or nay? Okay.
Call the question.
Board Member Golden has called the question. Now, I'm going to ask the, the board, you know, attorney, do we have to vote on that?
Mr. Chair, right now, what is before the board is Reverend Golden's motion to amend his motion with your comment. The clerk says that your comment, though, is not concise enough to state as a motion. That, that was the last motion that was made by the body. It was seconded. However, I think as a point of parliamentary management, I don't know that the body can vote on that, because it's not reflected in the record of the discussion. Which takes, if you agree with that, as Chair, you say you need something better to work with, that takes you back to Reverend Golden's original motion, which is what would be the last concisely articulated motion that was seconded before the body. And just as a, a comment, Mr. Chairman, I believe what you were trying to bring out was opposition to anybody other than law enforcement carrying weapons on campuses. Guardians are not law, law enforcement. They're, they're, they're guards, but they don't have any law enforcement authority. So that would kick them outside that, that motion.
Mr. Chair.
The, I, I have a question. I, I think that what Mr. Dye is pointing out is that guardians do have no arrest authority. They have, and that therefore is not law enforcement.
That's correct. They are not LEOs. They're not law enforcement officers.
Okay. And you're saying it's, it's counter to having, but, let, let me digress a second. If, you can't be a Guardian and also a teacher, you can't be a Guardian and also work in our cafeteria. Am I correct about that?
Can.
My, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is only classroom teachers are prohibited from being in the Guardian program.
Classroom teachers that are not law enforcement officers, former law enforcement officers, active-duty military, military veterans. That's the current law.
Administrators could be cafeteria workers.
Let me, let me help out. I, I make a motion that we table this. We are going on 12 hours of non-stop meetings. The chairman is tired as we are, and I don't think we're going to do the people's work on an issue of this importance. I ask someone to second my motion to table this, so that we can take a fresh approach to this and attack it when we're fresh? I mean, literally, it's been a long day, and the diversity of topics has gone all over the place. We've done good work. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger.
Mr. Minor, could I make a quick comment on the motion to table?
Just support it. Okay. We're, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Mr. Kennedy's, Mr. Kennedy is ready to make a comment, and he's ready to join the majority and table it, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that you hear Mr. Kennedy's comment.
I just need 20 seconds, and we can move past this. I just want, Mr. Sheriff, may I?
I'll table it to the next meeting, Mr. I'll change my motion. My motion is to table this issue until the next board meeting and/or workshop. Will you second it, Vice Chair Messenger?
I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion for, to table that has been made by, by Board Member Hope's, and it's seconded by the Vice Chair. Is there discussion? The, the Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with tabling. I think it's probably a good idea. So, we've kind of come back full circle to have something that everybody can look at and read for two weeks. But I think, on a positive note, all five of us have expressed where we are on this issue. So we may not have a resolution, but at least the community can go forward, and they know where everybody is. So I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. And for the record, I don't want our teachers in the classroom to be armed, but I don't want to affect some of the rural counties.
Okay. Is there any further discussion concerning Mr. Hope's motion to table this until the next regular board meeting of this school board? It's been seconded by Mr. Kennedy, I, it was, no, by, Vice Chairman Messenger. I, I understood, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I, I thought I understood Mr. Golden saying that he supported that. He had to make a visit to momentarily leave, but, okay. Now, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. It covers unanimously, but a message has been delivered to this community about how the board members, you know, feel about this issue. So, okay, the, all right.
We have a full workshop list, so we skip.
Okay. The, number six, let's see, legal department update.
None, none for me.
Okay. Instructional update, superintendent?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be brief. I do want to make you aware that we do have a Title I conference that will be scheduled on April 15th and 16th. Elena Garcia and her team have, have put that together, our Director of Federal Programs and Grants. It will be filled with all of our Title I schools and participants. We have some wonderful, great speakers coming, so it will be at the convention center, if you're interested in attending. It's also going to be covered in the newspaper, I believe. I sent you a press release on that email this evening, so wanted to make you aware of that as well. It is National Assistant Principals Week, April 8th through 12th. We have wonderful assistant principals in our schools, not to mention, we had the State of Florida-recognized AP of the Year, so, you know, just wanted to make sure that they're appreciated for all the fine work they do in serving our school communities and students. There were a number of you, a few of you, that attended the Congressional Awards this past, was it last week?
Friday.
Seems like a long time ago. I can't remember. But what it is, combined, no, Mr. Minor and Ms. Messenger were there. It combines Congressman Bern Buchanan, was there to recognize nine educators between Manatee and Sarasota County. I just want a shout out for Manatee had six of the nine, so we definitely served our area well. And I'm just going to briefly mention their names. Elizabeth Harris at Maica City Elementary, Chris King at Hell Middle School, Carrie McMillan at Palmetto High, Nancy Millard at Ballard Elementary, Kimberly Rivers at Manatee High School, and Maria Underhill at Braden River Middle. So we definitely want to recognize and congratulate them for receiving that honor last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Operations update, Deputy Superintendent Wagner.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Chairman, I do, I will keep it brief tonight. Last time we talked about food service, how we were going to offer meals over spring break, which we did. We actually served 2,800 meals over the spring break, which was the five days, which is congratulations to all who took part in that. And that's just using two mobile buses. So as we're talking about food service, we have almost 400 employees that make up the Food Service Department. This time of year, we're running about a 10% vacancy rate in food service, so we need to hire new employees. The food service team, Jessica Anderson, Regina Tomlin, Sandra Ford, in partnership with the MSTV team, Michael Tollenbaum and Brian Stedman, they can, they made a recruitment video. It's two minutes and 15 seconds long. It features Leonita Payatt and Carla Corley. Both employees are from the food service team at Freedom. So I'm going to just show this quick two-minute video, if you don't mind. Nick and Matt and Susan.
A cheeseburger or mac and cheese? Mac and cheese? I love it. I love seeing the little ones. I love when it's spaghetti day and they say puzgetti. Feeding kids makes a difference. You know, there's a lot of kids that are, go hungry and I think more than people know. And so I feel like us in food service, we are actually making a difference and that makes me feel good as a person, too. Yogurt, you can get yogurt. Yeah, go ahead. Being a mom and working for the school board is absolutely perfect. You come in to work every morning after you drop off your kids, you pick them up as soon as you get off work and, you know, you, you can go home, do their homework, everything you need to do. You don't have to get a babysitter. Yeah, I only worked five hours. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's awesome. It's like, but, and you've got the weekends off, you've got holidays off, you've got the summer off, you've got Christmas break off. It's, it's, it's cool. Would you like an ice cream, sweetie? There you go. I was a stay-at-home mom until I actually came to work for the school. There's benefits for all, so more specifically, if you work more than six hours, you can get medical, but as far as everybody, everybody is available for, we've got a wellness program that just encourages us, you know, to be healthy. And then we definitely, we have a retirement program that's also available for everybody. A hamburger? Do you want cheese? With cheese and smiley fries? You got it. It's great. They provide uniforms for us every year. Every year you get, and you get a shoe allowance. And that's what I love about this job is that you're still doing the food part and so I was comfortable going in because I just have that so much experience, but you don't have to work the nights and weekends, which is awesome, especially as a mom. It's just, it's awesome. Would you like an ice cream, ma'am? There you go, good manners. I love it. Thank you. You're impacting children's lives, which is, in essence, you're impacting the future.
You can begin building your future by visiting manateeschools.net.
That's great.
And so it's two minutes, two minutes and 15 seconds. It's a great recruitment. We are so proud of our employees. They work hard and, you know, food service serves between eight and nine million meals a year here just in Manatee County. So congratulations to all the operations teams. They are really working hard to support our school system.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Superintendent Wagner. The food looked great. We haven't had dinner. We've been doing this for, what, 10 hours? It's, okay, Superintendent remarks.
Yes, I want to recognize our Manatee teach winners for the month of March. We have two wonderful community sponsors, of course, Anna Maria Oyster Bar and Mr. Horn, who seems to be involved with everything, but they provided dinner for two for the winner that was selected with their Manatee teach video of what I taught, what I learned. And Michelle Dowell, who is the biomedical health specialist at Palmetto High School, was the wonderful winner of that award. And then Gettle also is providing a, an award for one of our selected teachers, which is a full car detailing, a wonderful thing to have. And Michelle Stansel, who's an occupational therapist with the ESE Department, who works at Moody Elementary, also was provided that award for March. So we encourage our instructional staff to upload those videos. We will be selecting another couple of winners for the month of April. Another thing I want to make you aware of that you might not know, this is occurring tomorrow evening at Lakewood Ranch High School at 6:00 PM, but I am recognizing a spotlight student, Blaze McMichael. He will be enlisting and joining the U.S. Army. So his parents reached out to me and asked me if I would be there to say a couple of words, so I'm honored to be a part of that. So right after his junior year, on May 20th, he will report to boot camp at Fort Jackson, South Carolina for nine weeks in training, but in August, he will return for his senior year at Lakewood Ranch High while also attending medical, MTC, Manatee Technical College, to earn a degree as an emergency medical technician. His eventual goal is to become a neurosurgeon or a cardiologist. So this will be occurring tomorrow evening for your awareness. And April is also Volunteer Appreciation Month and we will be recognizing our outstanding volunteers, May 28th, at a school board meeting. So I just want to thank all of the community members and volunteers for supporting us. Mr. Nelson, you being one of them. We could not deliver the services that we need without our community support and our volunteers. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Dye, I kind of passed over you as.
He didn't have any.
Okay, we're going by that. Thank you very much. Anything to be agreed? Okay, we're to board comments, Board Member Golden.
I had an opportunity to, a week ago, attend the dedication of a, an old, free, black community in East Bradenton called Angola. When the Underground Railroad was making its efforts, one of the places that they stopped was here in Manatee County. And they went from Manatee County down into South Florida and over to the Bahamas. And there was a, there was a, there's a park down there, Mission Park, I think that's the name of it, that commemorates this. And there was a book written about this part of Manatee County history. And I would, being new, I don't know how to, where to go from here. I'm just wanting it to become a part of, in some way, the educational offering in Manatee County, that our children might be able to go there, they might be able to see it and they might understand that this, this predates even Manatee County. This, this was Mosquito County at one time, I think, and it even predates the state of Florida. So this history, I'd like to try to incorporate into some of the other types of histories that we recognize and that we observe. So that's the one, one thing I'd like to talk about tonight.
Okay.
I'll add that to Mr. Kennedy's list.
Now, that one goes on Reverend Golden's list.
Okay. What, what is this? What? Okay.
I'm having Charlie work with some history initiatives and books, so I'm serious.
He's working with the Krieger Department. At the Alcat Center and you can, that could be your pet project.
Okay, okay, thank you, now Board Member Hope's. Board Member Kennedy?
That's mine.
What?
That's mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
I was just going to say that, Mr. Chairman, I.
At the 10-hour moment.
You really got me confused with.
I was, yeah. My only comment was, Mr. Chairman, you may have won the marathon award for board meetings with the fewest minutes of breaks in between, I mean, I don't even know how many meetings we had today, but you masterfully chaired them and you deserve, you deserve a rest in about three minutes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, okay, Brother Hope's, okay. The, you're up. Board Member Hope's, would you, you have some comments? Is that it? Okay, okay, thank you. We'll go on to Board Member Kennedy. Thank you.
I just have two quick items. One, I know the Palmetto group, the one-town, one-team group, has reached out to all of us. I met with them the Monday of spring break and I know Gina did too, only because we passed each other going in and out, but I, one of the things that came out of that meeting is some really constructive ideas for, you know, kind of a way to, I don't want to say partner, because there already are partners, but there's, there's two really, in my view, and one of them actually concerns student and employee safety, and it's the drainage issue at Palmetto. And I wasn't really sure, there wasn't, there was no place on the agenda to add or agenda item requests, I'll just kind of bring this up now, but, you know, when it, when they have heavy rains, the campus does experience some brief flooding issues, which I think can be, can be a safety issue. And the other one too, which I, having come from Manatee High School and I'm there on a regular basis due to take stock, is the courtyard at Manatee High really looks good and it was done very inexpensively with just that turf that was laid around the, so not just at Palmetto, but I think that could be a really inexpensive, inexpensive way to kind of, to kind of beautify their campus. So I kind of looked at this after meeting with them, is like, you know, what are a couple of like really things that we can do quickly and that are not budget busters? Not to say that everything on their list is a budget buster, but some of them are more pricey than others, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. If you have not met with them yet, I'm sure, I'm sure you will. The other one is related to Walter Miller. Walter, when I came onto the board.
Sorry.
Okay, that's, that's a dollar fine. Goes to the Manatee Education Foundation. When I came onto the board, he was always very approachable and he would email me from time to time and say, hey, I was watching the meeting and just can you walk me through what you were thinking with that? And would offer me advice. And one of the, one of the first things that Walter kind of educated me on is that Walter was instrumental in the partnership between the county and the school board in GT Bray Park. GT Bray Park, Mr. Miner, you probably know well, GT Bray Park was a school board property that turned into a partnership with the county. And I know Minnie King was here tonight to make the request of the football stadium at the new high school. My idea, that I haven't really talked to anybody in Walter's family, but I wanted to just bring it to the board as an idea, is that potentially we could again collaborate with the county and perhaps name the building at GT Bray, the administrative office building at GT Bray for Walter Miller, because that was something even after all these years, he was incredibly proud of and really, you know, GT Bray, not just the park, but how everybody came together to really create a nice, you know, a green space in the middle of West Bradenton. So I think that would be especially meaningful because of his direct connection to GT Bray. I will, I know the superintendent will, will help me with this, but I, you know, I could reach out to the folks at the county who would, who would deal with the naming issue of a county, of a county building, but I think in, you know, Walter's legacy, a collaboration between the school district and the county to name something in his honor would be a, would be a nice way to remember him. So, again, we can, we can talk about it later. I just wanted to present it to you guys.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Vice Chair Messenger?
I will be short and sweet. Superintendent already kind of brought up the Congressional Teacher Awards and that's just always a joyful, anytime teachers are celebrated, I'm happy. And I will add that Congressman Vern Buchanan even said that he did not support Army teachers at that event. So I thought that was a very interesting, I'm not sure that's the exact verbiage he used, but that, he did state that. I also wanted to say, and I'm going to use Mr. Golden's word, that he has stated several times, collegial, and I think that there was a lot of that tonight and I think that the board did a nice job handling, I think, something that is a very sensitive, difficult topic. It can be emotional and, but, but I also wanted to talk about what Mr. Kennedy just brought up, the Palmetto group, you know, they, I feel like they did have some really good ideas and, you know, some of that, I think, will come up when we do the five-year capital plan and, and talk about, you know, what the, that, the company that we hired comes back with. But I agree with you, drainage is something that I think we've all continually heard and if something that we could be addressed sooner rather than later, I think that would be important. I think there was one other thing that I saw that I thought really pertained to security and had to do with like the keys and the multitudes of keys, but I think if we've been to any school and walked the school with any principal, I think we've heard similar things. I know I have. But I, if, I know they're having another meeting. I got an email that they're having another meeting. I don't know if everybody else got that email.
Did not.
You didn't get another email?
No.
Oh, you're not invited. I'm sorry. I just invited you. This is so awkward.
You were kicked off the list.
You were kicked off the list. Let me tell you, no, let me tell everybody what it is. It is, I believe, it is April 22nd at 6:30 and they're doing it at the Palmetto Youth Center. So that's their next Palmetto group meeting and if you weren't invited, you're invited now.
I didn't say the youth center. I just didn't know the date.
Yeah, the 22nd at 6:30. So be there. And I, I think, you know, I think in the, in the long run, that's what's great about, once again, the local control and the local boards is we get to go to those things and hear what the community has to say, advocate for the community, and to me, that's, that's what it should be because I'm easily accessible. I will come to your meetings. I will, and, and somebody that's working at the state, they may not have that same availability. And so to me, that's, that's a win. So be there. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. What Minnie, Minnie King's, you know, suggestion about naming, I think she used the word stadium. I had heard otherwise, maybe the field or something like that, but I think that it's appropriate in some way, you know, the community or the board, you know, recognize, you know, Walter for just a host of wonderful things that he has helped instigate and to bring about. I, it's not in here, but I, I had the privilege on behalf of the board and the school district to, you know, speak at the services, you know, for Walter. It was really, really, really a nice thing. And I had the pleasure of knowing Walter for quite a few years, you know, beginning with when my daughter began King Middle School and I became an education activist and, and that's about like 30 years, it seems like, but, and I developed, you know, some affection for the guy. He's a very, really affectionate way guy in the way he acted for so long. So thank you, Mr. Kennedy, you know, for, GT Bray, you know, was a big thing. He was a representative when he was on the board for FSBA and also the Central, Central Florida Coalition. I can hardly talk now, I guess, but it's, Mary was really generous and nice and, I'm not making a lot of sense at this point. I was, when I was up in Tallahassee, and I wasn't aware of this, that the Secretary of Agriculture, you know, spoke at one of our meetings and I didn't realize it until that point that she was a tiger and she graduated from Palmetto High School. And I think it was later that day, I was, you know, able to, you know, visit Senator Galvano and I said, gee whiz, we got the President of the Senate, we got the Secretary of Agriculture. Manatee owns Tallahassee, so to speak. And I was very proud to, and these. And I, I was very proud to, and these are graduates of our public schools, and I think that says a lot about our, our community. What, and I just wanted to point that out, there, there was a lot of joy, you know, going around to all these places, but, and I, I really sincerely thank everybody here for the privilege of joining. So I think with that, after, after 10 hours, just about, we're gonna call this to adjourn. Thank you all for being here. We are adjourned.
Look, young man, I'm gonna tell you this once. I'm not gonna say it, but...